All right, we're gonna, we're gonna call this meeting to order on December 21st, 2015, the City of Crescent City City Council. Is there anything to report out of closed session?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Could you please take role?
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Here.
Mayor Gastineau?
I am here. And we're gonna have Ms. Murray lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay, we have no acknowledgements, but we are going on to our consent calendar. And the first one is approval of the regular meeting minutes from December 7th, 2015 council meeting. Receive and file warrant claims list for the period November 28th, 2015 through December 11th, 2015. Receive and file the bi-weekly payroll report for the period ending on December 12th, 2015, paid on December 18th, 2015. Receive and file monthly budget to actual finance, financial report of the city's major operating funds for the month of November 2015. Number five, consider and adopt resolution number 2015-62 of resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, appointing in one member and two alternate members to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority Board of Commissioners. And six, consider and adopt resolution number 2015-63, resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division Business Meetings and represent the city in vote and Division Legislative Committee meetings. Seven, consider and adopt resolution number 2015-64, resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City recognizing the compensation practices for volunteer firefighters participating in municipal, excuse me, in mutual aid activities for the state of California and federal fire agencies. Consider and adopt resolution number 2015-66, resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City declaring the allocation of the remaining fund balance of the Business Improvement District following its suspension at December 7th, 2015, regular meeting of the City Council. Nine, consider and adopt resolution number 2015-65, rescinding resolution number 2015-25 and selecting the annual adjustment factors for the calculation of the 2015-16 appropriations limit and improving the amount of the appropriations limit for the City of Crescent City. And number 10, oh, that's, sorry, that's number 10. That is all we have on the consent calendar. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Seeing no public comment on our consent calendar, I'll bring that back to the councils. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I move that we remove item number seven for further discussion?
All right, we want to pull item number seven for further discussion as considering adopt resolution, resolution number 2064 for the recognizing compensation practices for volunteer firefighters. Is there any other things to be pulled off the consent calendar? No. Do I see a motion with that one pulled off?
I'll move. Do we approve the consent calendar minus item seven?
All right, second. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the removal of item number seven for further discussion. And we have a second. Can you pull the vote, please?
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes. All right, on to item number seven, the consent calendar, which was resolution 2015-64 recognizing the compensation practices for volunteer firefighters participating in mutual aid activities for the state of California and federal fire agencies. Mr. Short?
Mr. Mayor, on that resolution, it, there was a part in there that defaulted to a reimbursement to the city for administrative costs at a rate of 10 percent. That is just that if the city failed to establish a percentage, it would go to that 10 percent. There is, as you can see, there's two parts of this fee structure. There's one for the apparatus that goes on this assignment, and there's also a rate, an hourly rate for the firefighters that go on this. So for a 16-hour assignment, which is one day, your, the apparatus that leaves makes a, in the ballpark of about $1,000. The minimum of two firefighters would make for the 16 hours about $900 for, for both of them. On a 14-day assignment, you're looking at, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $28,000. So I think a administrative rate of $2,800 for two weeks seems kind of steep to be pulling that away from our volunteers that are going on these assignments. So I was just hoping for just some discussion that would establish, actually establish a percentage rate there rather than the, than the default 10 percent.
Mayor, have Chief Wakefield address this. I believe that's in addition to, you know, the, the pay. Chief, could you address that?
Yeah. I apologize if that's the way it is. I didn't read it down. Thank you.
Okay. The, the 10 percent admin fee is on top of all the other bills. So if we get $1,800 or something for the vehicle for a day and $1,000 for the firefighter, that's 2,800. We add another $280 on top of that that the city gets for handling the payroll, handling the maintenance and stuff on the vehicle.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. And this is a, this is just kind of a clerical thing because otherwise they'll, the, the main thing about this is that you'll get paid portal, portal. So if you took an engine on an assignment, you get paid from the time you leave the station till you return to the station, full hours. You don't get paid for 16 or 12, you get paid for 24.
Got that. Yes, that's definitely appropriate. Didn't understand that about the administrative rate. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, I'm just glad that Councilmember Short pulled this because I want to support our volunteers and firefighters in any way we can. So it's a good opportunity to just say how much we all support you and thank you for all your work.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Short, you want to make a motion?
On that note, I will move to adopt item number seven from the consent calendar.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for item number seven. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you. That passes unanimously. Now, on our reports and presentations, item number 12, we actually get to swear in a new police officer, Mr. Ethan Miller. And the chief is gladly gonna take on that responsibility for me. So come on up, you two, and let's swear in our newest officer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Thank you for having us here this evening. Two things the chief gets to do that's really exciting, and that's promote somebody or bring somebody on board as a new member of the department. Tonight, I bring somebody new to our department. Mr. Miller here is a born and raised here in Crescent City, Delmore County. He was here, graduated from Castle Rock, attended Delmore for a while, and when he moved and went on to see the world. And he has returned with his wife Tammy, three lovely daughters who are here in the audience, along with his parents. Mrs. Miller, would you please come up? Okay, just give me a minute here. Mr. Miller, before I swear you in here, just say the appropriate words, you'll know what you, say this. I, in your name?
I, in your name.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take?
I take.
This, this obligation freely?
This obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations?
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Well and faithfully?
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Officer Miller. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you like a candidate here to say a few words?
Oh, sure.
Mr. Miller?
Councilmembers, everyone here from the public, I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve the city. I grew up here, I love it. I've lived in Virginia and North Carolina, I've lived down in Humboldt, I just decided I wanted to move back. I love this town and I wanted to serve, serve the area I grew up in, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Happy to have you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, now we go on to our communications. And yes, you guys don't have to stay, but we appreciate it if you do. Okay, so communications, public comment period. Any member of the audience invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir. Remember to identify yourself.
Good evening, good evening, councilmembers. At the encouraging of Councilmember Murray, I'm gonna come here tonight and give you a little update on Santa's workshop. My name is Ron Phillips, I live in the county, I work for Rural Human Services. I'm the Director of Family and Food, forgot who I was, Food and Family for Rural Human Services. One of the programs that I manage is the Santa's Workshop. This year, we were lucky enough to be back downtown where we always belong, thanks to the TAB Associates allowing us to use the Daleys Building. Right now, this, the numbers I'm gonna give you are unofficial, but we're looking at a total of 536 families, which equals about 1,180 children that we will be serving with a small gift for Christmas. We want to thank a lot of our partners. Like I said, we, we, over the years, have established a lot of good partnerships with different people in the community, one being TAB Associates. Toys for Tots, we've been working with now, this is our second year, and they bring us a lot of great toys that we use for the mittens that don't get pulled off the tree or they're pulled off the tree and not brought back. So this year, we're looking at somewhere about 140 children that would not have got a gift had it not been for a lot of support from a lot of different peoples, Toys for Tots being one of them. Also, we want to thank the Chris, there he is, Crescent Fire for their support. They brought in today a total of about $3,000 in gifts and toys that they had collected over the last three to four weeks. The Rock Program out at Pelican Bay, this year, they, they have a fundraiser out there that lasts throughout the year. This year, they were able to take and buy for over 230 of the children alone in our program. And of course, we work with Borrow Boys, they do their Christmas wreath and sell them. All the money is donated to Santa's Workshop. They come in and they buy and they bought for 50 children. And of course, we have to thank our media outlet, Bi Coastal Media and the Triplegat, who it seems like I'm on the phone with Renee every morning about the last two weeks, giving her update, pleading with people to get their stuff in. And this year, I want to thank the Public Works Department and our city manager. We had flooding three different times in the building and they got out, when was that, Sunday, we hauled sandbags, three loads, I believe it was, of sandbags to put around the building because we were expecting this big five to 11-inch storm. So I want to thank everybody in the city and everybody, and I know I forgot people, but I only have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work, too. Definitely a lot of, lot of kids are gonna wake up happy on Christmas. Okay, is there any other public comment? Come on up.
I'm Robert Durigo, Crescent City. I'm addressing the, your attempt at banning cannabis incomes inside the city here. After finding out the city manager was earning almost as much as the city manager of Honolulu and over 25 percent more than the city of Brookings, I'm disillusioned by our elected officials in difference to the fact that our county has the highest poverty rate in all the state. And now the city and the county are working hard not to fix poverty, but to finish pushing a black market out that has brought more money than tourism and crabbing combined, as unregulated as it was. Despite the fact our leaders cannot point at one that lives outside of poverty on seasonal tourism wages, they say we should learn more about hospitality for our future as wage earners. On New Year's, the law changes and our county could gear up to make way for the biggest thing since Paul Bunyan. But right now, we're trying to outright ban making an income from medical cannabis instead. In five years, when the average wages of already poorest county in the state dropped by 20 percent, a city manager already making a sliver away from 100 grand was giving 25,000, was given raises amounting to $25,000. And no fiscal analysis was ever allocated to see what the cannabis industry might have done for this community or what burden it might have brought upon it. The county and city have done nothing since the governor signed legislation months ago to imagine a future with the real industry. They only consider stopping it. Modern science does not support the tabooed filter through which our leaders view this opportunity. One acre of indoor production can produce millions in revenue a year. We have 4,000 acres of lily that brought in eight and a half million in 2012. Little more than permitting several dozen acres in indoor growth could produce a billion-dollar industry. And the last five years, the sheriff has found less cannabis in the hills, and Walmart has expanded and wages have dropped by 20 percent. We need commitment from our future industry and the medical cannabis industry is the only one capable of coming to this corner of California with the demand and revenue to make that happen. Our location lends those to high-end cannabis demand as appellation is protected in the new state law. Delmore, we are right above Humboldt. That could be our catchphrase, huh? So are cannabis usageers dangerous or do we just have cooties? The amount of money on the table is too much to stuff at. Our schools are leaking, the music program has instruments that look like they were salvaged on a beach. We have a higher violent crime rate than Arcata. There are some real eyesore of blight in our community, alcoholism and other substance abuse is up. There's not a whole lot of great shopping experiences in our town and there's little to stop folks from passing by the Avenue Giants and right to the Oregon coast. These are all issues that grow from a common root, poverty, and early leaders neglect to appropriately tackle it. After the legacy of Roger Gitlin and seeing his challenger, Mrs. Murray, cite a platform more based around unity, I cannot help but feel our community has been completely neglected to create a retirement utopia that should not exist without an economy to bring willing workers out of poverty. Through a locally controlled industry, we can lift those off the ground, out of poverty, increase construction, create thriving manufacturing. Those lifted out of poverty can now take the burden of the sewer off the back of widows making social security and themselves are in poverty. We are in poverty together and we can lift ourselves out of poverty. I'm, I'm sorry, would you allow me one or two more moments?
Just a moment.
Okay. Look to the future, alternative energy that has come to the community because of an industry that would not be sustainable over the long haul without it. It is 30 years down the road and cannabis farmers throughout the Midwest have produced a tragic load of cannabis and the prices plummet. No farmer can move the product before it dries up and they are growing months without an order except Humboldt County and the counties surrounding it that have become known in the same loving way as wine country and now it's cannabis country. Because of law protecting appellation, folks in New York, Vancouver, Tokyo, even Amsterdam pay high prices for anything grown in the North Pacific corner of California. Electricians and contractors still have work building out barns for indoor horticulture and land once dominated by lilies and even the lily farmers have turned to the business. All of Delmore cannabis is tested to meet high-quality standards, grown indoors in greenhouses to manage a reputation for utmost quality, and all of downtown is bustling with workers spending money. The water and sewer bills of fixed-income seniors living in poverty are now subsidized without a problem thanks to this industry and the new generation that have good paying work trimming and packaging cannabis, manufacturing cannabis products, manufacturing-
Please, please, finish up.
Sure. Well, anyways, if, if Catherine Murray runs for supervisor and Mr. Gitlin runs and there's nobody that's better suited, I'm gonna go ahead and run for board of supervisor on the platform of bringing an industry that is worth several zeros in the back of crabbing and tourism together if it is only 10 percent of what Humboldt produces.
All right.
We only have 27, well, I'm gonna give you these, this is-
Please give them to the clerk.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
There's a lot of taboo myths about cannabis production and I hope that this gets you. I have written to you, all of you, and never, never was written back. It seems like you took my email and almost said, oh shit, we need to ban cannabis and so, but I appreciate you not getting back to me.
Thank you. I didn't get an email. I didn't get it either. Please resend it. All right, is there any other public comment? All right, seeing no other public comment, closed public comment. And we're gonna go on to our next item on the agenda, number 11, and we're gonna adjourn to the Housing Authority, and we're gonna call that to order. And we're gonna do roll call for the Crescent City Housing Authority. Are we there? We'll dispense with roll call because we're all still here up on the dais. And, and, no, we'll just, we'll just go into reports and presentations, we have none. We do have public comment period. Does anybody want to make any public comment on the Housing Authority? No, there's no public comment, so a closed public comment. We'll go to our consent calendar. We have two items, approval of the regular meeting minutes from November 16th, 2015, and number two, approval, oh, actually, I have three, approval of the warrant claims from November 7th, 2015 through December 11th, and three, consider and approve 2016 payment standards for HCV program. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar for the Housing Authority? Seeing no public comment, closed public comment, and bring it back to the councils, is there any discussion? No discussion, motion? I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second, so please pull the vote for the consent calendar.
Member Holly?
Yes.
Member Murray?
Yes.
Member Short?
Yes.
Member Inscore?
Yes.
And Member Gastineau?
Yes, thank you. That passes unanimously for the Housing Authority. Seeing no other business on the Housing Authority, we will adjourn to our next meeting, which will be January 19th, 2016. And then we will now adjourn to the Accessor Agency and the Redevelopment Agency, call that to order, we will dispense with roll because we're all still up here. We have no reports or presentations. It is public comment period for the Accessor Agency. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, bring it back, closed public comment. Oops, excuse me. And now we have a consent calendar with two items, the approval of the regular meeting minutes from November 16th, 2015, and two, approval of the warrant claims from November 7th, 2015 through December 11th, 2015. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Nope.
For me?
All right, do I have a motion?
Move we approve the consent calendar.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar for the Accessor Agency. Please pull the vote.
Member Holly?
Yes.
Member Murray?
Yes.
Member Short?
Yes.
Member Inscore?
Yes.
Member Gastineau?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. We have no further business, so we will adjourn from the Accessor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, and we'll have our next meeting on January 19th, 2016. Okay, we are now on to public hearings, and we have a few here. It's number 13, conduct a public hearing to review and prove the final accomplishments under Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Contract 12, CBDG 8380. Direct staff to submit final closeout documents to CBDG, take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Ms. Lever, City Accountant, to present this item.
All right.
In 2012, the city was awarded a $2 million Community Development Block Grant to fund several projects. $1,280,000 for the replacement of a sewer main on Second Street, $100,000 to fund the ongoing operations of the swimming pool, $225,000 for the Rural Human Services Harrington House Domestic Violence Shelter, $275,000 for the Rural Human Services Food Bank, and the city was also granted $120,000 to cover the general administration costs of the grant. In addition to these projects, in 2014, the state issued a memo requiring all program income on hand to be spent, and the city received approval to spend its program income on the municipal pool rehabilitation project, which was added to this contract. To review these accomplishments, we will have a couple of short presentations. Eric Weir will discuss the sewer project. Matt Hildebrandt will discuss the swimming pool and the program income project. And Scott Feller is here from Rural Human Services to talk about the food bank and Harrington House. After hearing the presentations, we would like you to receive public comment, authorize the city manager to sign the closeout documents, and direct staff to file the closeout documents with the state. This will close out the 2012 grant. The 2014 grant has already been awarded and those projects are underway. Once the city has spent 50 percent of the 2014 grant, we will be eligible to apply for the next grant. When that time comes, the city will hold a public hearing to receive input on which projects to apply for, and those projects must significantly benefit low and moderate income persons who must be primarily city residents. I'll turn this over to Eric Weir to talk about the sewer project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Mayor Gastineau, members of the council. Yes, CDBG projects always come with a little added stress and a little added, added nuance more than most grants because like Linda said, the CDBG grant, you need to spend half of the money that you were allocated before you're allowed to apply for the next grant. So with the 2012 grant, we had the Second Street Santerio Sewer Project, approximately $1.3 million project, which represented over 50 percent. So basically, getting this project done allowed the city to apply for the 2014 grant. This was a, definitely a needed project. It was to replace a, an old failing sewer line in Second Street. The line that was replaced was between F Street and B Street, approximately 1,200 lineal feet. Replaced that 18-inch clay sewer pipe with a new 24-inch PVC sewer pipe, five manholes, 13 laterals, and reconstructed the, reconstructed the street as well. The sewer line is already, we've already seen the benefits of it. As Second Street, once we got into the project, we saw that a lot of the manholes didn't have proper bottoms to it, so we had a lot of I and I coming into some of those manholes. So we've already seen a reduced flow at the treatment plant and reduced amount of I and I because of this project. You see, this is the area that this project benefited in yellow, basically almost the entire city as it gravity flows into Second Street.
What's I and I?
I and I is infiltration and inflow.
Thank you.
So that is, that is what we expect. So that is what we experience in the wintertime. And infiltration is when the groundwater gets up, it goes inside the joints, and inflow is when there's a big storm event, there's a direct correlation between flows at the treatment plant. So by completing this project, we have seen a reduction in that. You see the yellow areas, the area that was served by this project. This was a large project for us to take on. The timing of the CDBG grant dictated that it be completed in the middle of the winter so we could apply for the CDBG grant in the spring. So de-watering was a huge part of it. We were fortunate in that year in which we had a very dry winter to complete this, unfortunate because that was basically the middle of the drought as well, but we were able to get this project done. So they drilled de-watering wells all throughout it. Excavations were deep, sands were encased in water, and so we constantly had to deal with running sands while we were doing it, so they had to keep the trenches tight and compact. You can see the line was about fifteen feet deep there. You can see the worker is actually standing up way down in that hole there. That's where the pipe had to go. Big equipment, the excavator, I believe off the top of my head weighed about a hundred and sixty thousand pounds, which they had to use. You can see some of the manholes that were put in. Compaction of the aggregate base was important and vital, and so we had to do multiple compaction tests throughout the project to ensure that we weren't gonna have any settling or any depressions left in the street. Bypass pumping, see that was also critical, is that entire area of the city had to be bypassed, so they had to have bypass pumps not only ready for the normal sewer flows but also the higher sewer flows in the middle of winter. You can see the final construction there at B Street, building that last manhole. There's Kevin, the last actual man in that manhole before it was built, and then the repaving of the street. Most importantly, the project, there's the total funding amount. Project came in under budget and most importantly, in time for us to apply for the two thousand fourteen grant in which the city was successful in obtaining another two million dollar grant. So that in a nutshell is that project.
Work. Wait, did you say that the city project came in under budget?
This, yes, this one did. Self amount. Alright, and with that, I'll introduce Matt Hildebrandt to talk about the pool project improvement.
Take care.
Good evening, Mayor Gaston and council members. It's nice to be in front of you, it doesn't happen often. So, as Ms. Lever already stated, we received a hundred thousand dollars to help with operating costs, and that's a great benefit to us because as you know, the city subsidizes the pool to the tune of about two hundred thousand a year. So that was a great benefit. Even better is what came a little later. As a result of that grant, we received a hundred and sixty-one thousand in program income, and with that, we were able to do some much needed improvements, starting with the roof. We work at a swimming pool and so we're used to being wet but not usually getting it on top of our heads. So the roof was much needed and they did a great job. You see some pictures there, before and after. We got new skylights. The old ones had been there almost fifty years and had some leaks and cracks, as you can see there in the pictures, so they just turned out beautiful. The new ones are great and no leaks, and that's a good thing the last couple of weeks. So the hundred and sixty-one thousand was used for the roof. We also got new LED lighting in the natriorium and underwater, so that was really nice and it's working out really well. And then we also were able to use a portion for a new ADA compliant ramp by the back door. There's a before picture of it. As you can see, it was not in great shape and was not wheelchair friendly. And now you can see the work that they did. And as you go in the back door there at the pool, the ADA changing room is right there, so that works out perfect and it's used many times every day, so that was also a great addition. The hundred and sixty-one thousand wasn't quite enough to finish all those great things, and so the Promote Our Pool Foundation helped us out by giving us a thousand and sixty-three dollars, and then the city kicked in the other five that we needed to finish things up. So we did the big renovation back in two thousand and eight, and I always felt like it wasn't quite complete because we didn't have a roof and lighting, and now I feel like our big renovation is complete. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Mayor. Alright, thanks, Matt. Okay, Mr. Feller.
Scott Feller, Executive Director of Rural Human Services. I'd like to speak a little bit about Rural Human Services first, where your organization that you spent your money on. We are a private 501(c)(3) corporation founded in nineteen eighty-one, thirty-four years ago. We serve the community through quite a few different programs. Our largest is Harrington House, a twenty-eight bed, four crib facility. We average about twenty-five hundred bed nights a year, eight thousand meals a year. Most of these numbers are through our last fiscal year ending July first. This year, our biggest change there has been, because of our funding and new legal requirements, we are now LBGTQ inclusive, and we actually have men in shelter, which is domestic violence shelter always has been, and we are now, I'm actually pretty proud of that. We're doing well there. Our Food and Family Division, our second largest program, is, we have about twenty-one hundred contacts a month, and last year we did just under three hundred thousand pounds of food that we gave out through our food banks and through all of our different programs. We had a thousand forty-four emergency food boxes, sixteen hundred senior boxes that were distributed through five different sites. We go to Clamath, to Smith River, and around town, and we have the only demonstration cooking trailer that we know of in the US, for sure in California, and it was at the food market quite a bit this year. Our food market had increased twenty percent this year. As you drive by the highway, you see a sea of pop-up tents there. We're averaging over sixty vendors, up from fifty the year before, and we've had as high as seventy-four vendors there this year. So we had lots of new people there, it was kinda nice. And you heard a little bit about Santa's Workshop already. Our America's Job Center Program, which is almost even with the food bank as far as the size of program, we had fifteen thousand walk-ins, sixteen thousand phone calls, and over seven thousand people using our computer lab in the fourteen, fifteen year. That's a lot of people. And this year, we're gonna have, it's projected, we're gonna have fewer walk-ins, fewer people calls, but we're gonna have almost twenty percent more people using the computer lab. So those twelve computers in our computer lab get worked extensively, as Mr. Gaston can attest to. Our Natural Resources Division, we do education in the classroom, we've been doing that for twenty-four years with our aquariums. We've educated over ten thousand kids on conservation methods and rearing, raising fish. We have done over twenty miles of critical habitat stream restoration work through that program in the last fifteen years, so we're pretty active there. We provide the financial services for the Thanksgiving Community Dinner, which serves over seven hundred people annually per year. And our Support Living Services for supporting adults eighteen years of age and older with intellectual and development disabilities. It's a service for intellectually challenged individuals, integrating them into society while helping them with their basics from banking to the prescription medicines, housing, shopping, doctor's appointments, and we take them to doctor's appointments as far away as San Francisco because a lot of them have some interesting challenges. And so we have a pretty active program there. More specifically about the CDBG grants, first off, I'd like to thank your staff, they've been wonderful and helpful. We had quite a glitch with the hierarchy in Sacramento, decided on May tenth that everything we had done for the previous two years had to all be converted to new forms for data we'd never collected. So we were able to work through that. Linda was just awesome on helping us work through that. You have on you the chart about our money, what was spent, where it came from, and what that fourteen grand is, so you have a comparison as to where we're gonna be going this year. It was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the food bank. Of that forty thousand dollars was spent on a box truck, or seventeen foot box truck. We can put sixteen pallets in that. Where our van before, we could have one pallet, and this way, we're able to go down to Eureka to the Redwood Empire Food Bank to help us on our food costs, and we also bring back food for Cam when we have room, and they help sharing the cost. So we're supporting other nonprofits in the community also. By doing this, we've taken our food costs from, if you were to put it at a retail level of three dollars and thirty-six cents per pound, or three dollars and thirty-six cents for food, we spend about a dollar. So we spend less, a third less than what a re, a third of the cost for what normal people pay for food. A lot of food we can get for nine to twenty-five cents a pound. Everything seems to be in pounds with the food bank. And whenever possible, we buy locally from our farmers' markets, our local stores when they have sales, or we can make deals with them. Romeo cheese, we quite often buy a lot of butter, they'll make us a deal on stuff, so we also try to support our local community in doing all of this stuff. You can see on there that the, well, it doesn't show there, but the other expenditure we had was our walk-in refrigerator at our food bank. We actually have two walk-in refrigerators, one at Harrington House and a walk-in freezer, and we have a walk-in refrigerator at the Harrington, or the RHS main building, they're on M Street. At any given time, we probably have ten thousand pounds of frozen food and three thousand pounds of refrigerated food, because we like to buy in bulk and then distribute it whenever possible to do that. Harrington House, you can see the dollars on that. The only thing that's probably not specific is the direct assistance, and that is where we buy stuff for them. And this year, in that grant, we also replaced all the mattresses the first time they've been done since the building opened. They were in need of it. And where we can provide assistance to people and transportation and so forth, we're quite regulated as far as what we can say and not say. That was another glitch that Linda was able to help us get through HUD with. We're not allowed to say anything, and so we found a way to work around the mandatory requirements, reporting requirements that HUD, they now get a number, they don't get a name. So we can protect their identity. Any questions?
Thank you all very much for what you've done. It's amazing the number of people that you've been able to help.
Great work. Thank you. Okay, those were our three reports, and now we want to open up for public comment on this public hearing. Is there any public comment on these reports for our CDBG from two thousand twelve? Okay, seeing no public comment, we're gonna bring it back to the council, and we need to accept this report and direct staff to finish up the documents. Any discussion?
I just have a question regarding the, to disencumber the remaining balance, the eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. When we do that, what, does that money go back? Is that what we do with it? Is it, can it, does the state say it's released and you can do something else with it? What happens to the eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars when we disencumber it?
That's a good question. See if Ms. Lever can answer that for us?
Okay, thank you.
The disencumberance, it's not us sending money back to the state, they had never sent it to us to begin with. It's because the sewer project and some of the administration costs came in under the original budget, so we're just basically telling the state we didn't use it, and then they will use it for some other project.
So we just don't get it?
Correct.
Alrighty, awesome. Thank you.
Real quickly, it was during these cycles, wasn't it, that we found that we were running short of money to pay the respective organizations, and we forwarded some money and we were waiting to get reimbursed from CDBG over time? Does that sound familiar to you at all? We had, I just wanted to make sure all that has transpired.
Yeah, I sat down too fast. Yes, that was related to the requirement that we spend all of our program income, which we spent on the pool project. So while we were doing that, the city was paying these costs, and then the state has reimbursed us.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Once you sit down, we'll think of something. Okay, do I have a motion? Is there any other discussion really? Great job, everybody.
I don't know, go ahead, I don't know which line to read.
I'll move to approve the final accomplishments under this Community Development Block Grant Contract Twelve, CDBG Eight Three Eight Zero, and that we direct staff to submit financial, final closeout documents to CDBG.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gaston?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Our next public hearing is, hold the public hearing, waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number seven, eight, nine, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding chapter seventeen point three-three, Public Facilities or P D District to Title Seventeen zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code, take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo?
This will be Mr. Taylor's time.
Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. Again, we're coming back, clean up some stuff for our current two thousand nine, two thousand fourteen housing element. Again, some other issues related to Senate Bill Two. As I recall, we just kinda went through adopting the transitional supportive housing definitions. And so another part of SB Two, which is also known as the Fair Share Zoning Bill, required all local agencies, cities and counties, to identify a zoning district where emergency shelters would be allowed by right, which means they did not require any discretionary approval, such as you couldn't require a use permit or any other kind of oversight. So our current housing element, we identified, we stated that we were gonna designate the R three zoning district to allow the emergency shelters by right, but going back and reading the bill again and looking at that, staff kinda concluded that it wasn't probably the best location for this emergency shelters. Looking at most of the R three zoning, one is our highest density zoning, and so HUD also requires us to develop a certain amount of housing every five years, and so it didn't really make sense to take up our highest density zoning district, one. Two, the majority of the R three zoning district, if you look at it, a lot of it's located on the west end of town. If you think about around Gary Street and those locations, Joe Hamilton School, those are all our R three, your multifamily, your apartment complexes. And so reading back through the bill, what the bill states is what the things we need to, certain things we need to consider when we talk about looking for a zoning district. One of the biggest things is the location next to kinda the essential services. Two is, can it support at least one year-round emergency shelter? Is it reasonable that you're able to either develop a new shelter or convert an existing building? And then, three is, what type of assistance from, you know, public agencies is there available? So going back and looking, if we look at most of the services in the city, a lot of them are really located in our downtown district, kinda along our one-on-one corridor. So if you think about, you know, mental health is downtown, kind of the rehabilitation centers, our social services building, so a lot of our essential services, if you think about the food bank, all those are all located kinda along that one-on-one corridor. And so what Senate Bill Two allows us to do is, we can either, one, designate an existing zoning district, we can, two, come up the new zoning district, three, put in an overlay district where you would designate an area within a zoning district, or four, if jurisdiction can show that they already supporting, have enough supportive services, say we were kinda partnered with emergency shelters, they show that we could already serve the population, then the requirement really, you weren't required to come up with a zoning district. So what we're proposing here tonight is adding chapter seventeen point three-three, which is Public Facilities or the PF Zoning District. And your staff report is also, is an attachment, two attachments. One is Attachment A, which outlines the parcels that are identified in the zoning district, and two, a zoning map. And what the PF district does, it only applies to lands that are owned by government agencies. So we're talking city, county, state, federal, any government agency. So if you look at the zoning, the parcels that we designated, we started off here with six parcels, one of them being the fairgrounds location, city hall, our fire hall, corporate yard, and the police station. And a couple of those locations have extra undeveloped parcels attached to them, one. And then, two, really capturing, looking at the fairgrounds, and all these, if you look at it, are located close to the downtown or along that one-on-one corridor. The fairground property is already actually designated as emergency shelter, and historically they have actually had emergency shelters at this location. That one parcel alone is about twenty-two acres in size. Combined with the other parcels, we're probably looking at about, you know, twenty-two acres, I mean twenty-four acres total, and you know, think about a city that's one point four square miles, one point five square miles, it's a pretty significant, you know, portion of land. Again, we felt it was more prudent to look at this area downtown, again, for its location, to, public agencies are located downtown, they can provide the services, two, to the existing services that are downtown, also you're talking about even your food, your shopping, everything else is downtown in that location. in that location. And the other thing about the public facilities, what allows us to do is, in the future, we can also, you know, apply the zoning district to other properties that may come up. The city could partner with other agencies if that comes up in the future, to either develop or, you know, develop a new facility or convert an existing facility to emergency shelter. And I want to point out that, you know, this, we're designating a zoning that allows, you know, emergency shelters by right. It's not, you know, SB 2 doesn't force anybody, or it's not making anybody, you know, come up with emergency shelter, develop one, you know, at this point in time. Now, go through, and the other thing, it kind of serves a second purpose for us, too, because we've looked at, as a city, for designating, coming up the public facilities designation, also for our facilities, and that's why we've kind of added some of the extra ones, parcels. So if you look at the, what it allows principal permitted uses, public schools, parks, playgrounds, and recreation facilities, public fairgrounds and related uses, and then public buildings, including city halls, police stations, fire stations, libraries, courts, museums, auditoriums, hospitals, and similar uses, and then the emergency shelters designation. What the law also allows us to do, says jurisdictions, you can't have this discretionary approval, but what you can do is you can have some, not real development standards, but standards associated with things like we have in there for security, for lighting, for parking standards. The development standards can't be any more strict or stringent than the existing residential or commercial standards that are in place for any zoning district, but we can have the addition that we have here for the standards for actually for operation, say. So that's for the intake facility that we have down here as well. And it says that they have to have onsite management at all times. The one thing I will note that we added on here, too, one thing we've come up with and we've, for our own public facilities, is development for a lot of our communications. So if you look at Section 17.33040, that, over the height, and we did add something in there for, communication antennas may be erected to a maximum height of 60 feet. So this allows us, we're looking for a lot of line of sight now, and we're coming up with a lot of our internet access and kind of our, you know, combining communications for our facilities. And the other thing, too, it allows us a little more latitude for development in the future for our public facilities, allows a larger block coverage area, it's at up to 85 percent of the lot. So we're kind of envisioning in the future, as the city grows and the need grows, that we can actually expand our facilities as needed. So again, you have the proposed zoning, you also have a zoning map attached and the parcel list, and I'll answer any questions if there aren't at this time.
I have, I have a couple of questions. So this is all public properties. What if a private landowner wanted to establish, would we, would they just, could they do an emergency ordinance to get it changed, or how would that work?
I think what we really envisage here, that there'd be some type of a partnership between a public agency and, say, a private entity.
Okay, so it doesn't preclude a private owner from, they would just do a partnership?
Not preclude, per se, but it would look for a partnership with another agency. And again, this is all public agencies, right? This is city, county, the state, I mean, there's a wide variety. And if you, really, if you look now in the community, who are providing those services?
Right.
It's pretty much your public agencies are providing the majority of the services.
Okay, and then my other question is, and where did the 10-person limit come from, or 10 beds? Is that in the, is that our discretion, or is this a state?
It does, allows us to come up for our discretion. What we look at, and it's really based on kind of the statistics, and if you look over to the HCD website, you know, they give you some stats, and I did print them out here. So they give us some statistics, and, you know, we don't have a great, hard, vast set number on the amount of homeless that are located within the city itself. If you go to the HCD website, they give you kind of a county number, so what they call critically homeless, of about 126 individuals. And just giving kind of a quick estimate, you know, for our fair share housing, we're roughly about one quarter, about 25% of that. So we take about 25% of that number, it's roughly around 30 individuals. So we felt that 10 beds, because there are 10 individuals per day, was sufficient, but we could certainly look at that if we don't feel that it is.
Okay, I just didn't know where that number came from, so, thank you.
Mr. Taylor, if we, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. If an individual or a nonprofit came to the city with a proposal, let's say they bought an existing building someplace in town that's obviously not going to be in this new PF district because it's identified with five specific parcels of properties, would they be able to apply for a conditional use permit that would be evaluated by the Planning Commission or by the City Council?
Well, we couldn't, right? Because the whole idea is there's no discretionary approval, right? So we can't require. Now, we could certainly look at that, and we can add that into other zoning districts, right? We have to identify at least one zoning district that allows by right, no discretionary approval, but nothing precludes us from going back and identifying other zoning districts where they would be allowed by use permit.
I think that that's really important. I mean, I'm in supportive of the PF district because I think it, number one, it helps us to make sure that we're complying with state law and our housing requirement. But I think that when you look at it, and I'm not in favor of trying to do an overlay with no restrictions in a city with a footprint of less than 1.7 miles, I think to try to establish one zoning, to put that in, is just not, it's not responsible. But I do think we need to address the fact that there's going to continue to be a need for the possibility of an ongoing shelter that may not represent into a partnership. And I just, I guess because of the years that I spent on the Planning Commission, I have certainly good faith in the, our Planning Commission to evaluate something that comes as by use permit. This fulfills our state requirement to put no encumbrances for them, for somebody to do it in this district. But I think we need to have a process that allows somebody who doesn't want to do something in this district, but is willing to abide by whatever conditions that we state are necessary. And so I know that they are two issues, and I'm in support of this, but we need to, I think we need a process by which that we can provide the option for conditional use as approved by whatever guidelines that we establish. So that's, because I think, I think that that's the more realistic avenue that somebody's going to take down the road, at least initially.
No, and that was a good time to look at that, because, you know, as we know, we're updating our housing element, obviously, so that's certainly something that we could look at and implement in our policies and goals in the housing.
I mean, I can see nonprofits in this community, an organization, even though they're not in the city limits, but somebody like Daily, our Daily Bread, who's outside of the city limits, but if they got an opportunity with a building in the city limits and wanted to do this, we need to have something in place to say, this is how you can do this, and these are the requirements, and no, it's not without encumbrance, we have some specific guidelines, but I think we need, while we're doing all this, we need to put all those things into place. That's, you know, my feeling about that.
Is there anything in here that would preclude our continuing emergency services at the fairgrounds if there a true emergency existed, like a tsunami, or if it got severely cold, or, you know, there's a lot of rules and regulations about what that emergency shelter should look like if we adopt this, I don't want that to...
Sure, we're talking, right, this is for a year-round emergency shelter.
This is, that's what I didn't catch.
Yeah, so if there's a natural disaster or something that affect, two totally different things.
Okay.
So that doesn't change anything there.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, if you look at the PF zoning district, you know, it specifically states fairgrounds and all related uses.
Thanks.
Any other question? All right, we're going to open this public hearing up. Is there any public comment on the PF district, Title 17 zoning? Okay, see, oh, come on up.
Thank you.
I'm Connie Morrison, I'm from the county. And what I wanted to say is, I just saw the profile of Delmarin County and Crescent City for 2015, and it says the population of Crescent City is 7,188. And I want to, I want to consider that 3,000 of those people are prisoners. So that brings it down to 4,000 approximately. So if we're talking about emergency shelters and the funding for emergency shelters, that's almost half, or somewhere in there, of taxpayers, probably. The prisoners don't pay anything towards any of this. Okay, so if we could establish a working population or one, the population that isn't incarcerated.
Thank you. Seeing any other public comment on this issue? Seeing no public comment on this issue, we'll bring it back to the council. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, do we have a motion?
So we're not actually approving this ordinance, we're just reading it?
This is just an introduction, it will come back.
Okay. So...
So what do you need?
Yeah, what is our action?
I'll move that we waive full reading, and we read by title only, and we introduce Ordinance 789, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 17.33, Public Utilities, to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Facilities.
Is this facilities?
Public facilities.
Utilities? Oh, no, I've got utilities on the mind, facilities.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the facilities. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously.
Before we move on, can I direct a question to staff?
Sure.
Mr. Plaza, is there, is, would this be an appropriate time to ask that staff look into adopting or presenting to us some information regarding what might happen if we're looking at a possibility of conditional use for emergency shelters within the other zoning districts?
Yes, yeah, if we have consent from the council.
If we have consent, I would like for us staff to look into that for us, please.
Do we have consent from the council?
Yes.
All right?
Thank you.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Okay, our last public hearing tonight is, hold the public hearing, waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce Ordinance Number 793, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending the Crescent City Municipal Code by adding Chapter 17.93, Standards for Marijuana, to Title 17 zoning, to expressly prohibit marijuana cultivation, dispensaries, deliveries, and other marijuana-related uses within the city limits. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Plaza?
And that's Mr. Taylor presenting the title.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. So recently, Governor Brown signed three bills into law. Collectively, they're AB 266, AB 243, and SB 643, known as the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. So what the state is, I think, attempting in this is, because it's pretty...
I'm sorry.
Please continue.
Okay. Because it's a pretty, it's a pretty broad brush for marijuana regulation, looking at anything from the regulation of marijuana food products, the marijuana itself, as far as pesticides and the health and safety of the marijuana, to transportation, I talk maybe from local transportation up to tractor-trailer loads to dispensaries, the sale of marijuana, and then also cultivation of marijuana. What the state has said in this legislation is that the state will start issuing licenses for the cultivation of marijuana. They don't anticipate they'll start issuing licenses about 2018, but unfortunately, when they crafted this legislation, there was a provision in there that stated that any jurisdiction that did not have an ordinance in place by March 1st of 2016, then you would not have a say in the issuing of licenses for the cultivation of marijuana, and the state would be the sole entity for issuing licenses. So it didn't leave us a whole lot of time to get this together. The other thing that also came out in this, it was for the deliveries of marijuana, and a lot of this is tied to deliveries from dispensaries and also mobile dispensaries. So again, if we didn't have an ordinance expressly prohibiting it, then it would also be allowed to anybody who's issued a state license for cultivation of marijuana. And so looking at this, and not, you know, maybe the states, you know, they finally come together and kind of have more comprehensive law. I know it's been, you know, there's been a lot of frustration over the years with the passage of 215, and then, of course, you had the 420 Act. But we felt it was prudent, given the short timeframe that we have right now to get this going, that we would just put into place. And what we're doing here is a total prohibition on cultivation, and I want to make sure we clarify this, too. There's a big distinction between the city and the county, right? We're a city of 4,000 residents of about 1.4, 5 square miles. We're not a large, we are a very small jurisdiction, and you're right, we don't know. You know, this also allows, the law also allows taxation, but I'm not sure how that works for medical marijuana, as I don't know if they're looking forward to legalize marijuana possibly coming down the line, but we don't know. We don't know the benefits, and we certainly don't know the negative impacts at this time. Again, we're a very small jurisdiction, and the city, if you look at the city, we don't have any zoning for agricultural use or heavy manufacturing or industrial use in our city. And the other thing, if you listen to what they're saying here as far as the production, too, you know, they're talking about issuing licenses for folks who produce marijuana products with volatile chemicals, and those who produce without volatile chemicals. So it's going to be interesting how this all comes about and plays out. I just want to make sure, just, we're clear with that upfront here, you know, we're talking about the city limits here, this isn't a county-wide, this is specific to the city itself. So again, we're talking about for cultivation, delivery, sales, and processing. This isn't preventing anybody who needs to have their medical marijuana from getting those. I think, you know, there's already dispensaries out in the county, I think everybody still will have the same access that they would need. If we're talking about cultivation within the city limits, you'd probably pretty much only be talking about indoor cultivation at this time. So again, you read the staff report, you know, we laid out the argument why we think that it's not beneficial to the city at this time, and it's not prudent, it's prudent to move forward with the prohibition. And the city, there's been a lot of legal precedent set, one of the biggest ones that came down the line was the lawsuit that happened at the City of Lyev Oak, but with the courts made a determination at that time that, under the policing powers of cities and through their zoning laws and ordinances, that they can put a prohibition on cultivation, sales, dispensaries, and the like, and it is held up in courts. And actually, this law reaffirms that. I mean, the law specifically states that jurisdictions can come out with these types of ordinances. And then I'll put you back to the ordinance itself. Again, you have the legislative finding and the statements of purpose. Then we talk about the laws and the authority that the city does have to pass this, and the prohibition, there's definitions in here. And I guess, thinking about, we really go down to the end on the, you know, prohibited activities, and then you go down to 17.93050, public nuisance. And so really what we're saying here is, anybody who conducts this type of business or cultivation in the city is, really, we're talking about is considered a public nuisance. That's kind of where our authority extends to here. So again, any violation of chapters hereby declared a public nuisance that may be abated, punished, or subject to injunctive release by the city by any means available at law. And then, well, the interesting thing, when this was coming down, when we're crafting this ordinance, another ruling came out that, let me back up a little bit, any violation of our municipal code can also be prosecuted as a misdemeanor, clear misdemeanor. But there was a recent court case that came out that said that that could not apply to the cultivation of marijuana. So then, if you go down to 17.93.060 violations, and this was worded the way it is, any violation of this chapter except... any violation of this chapter, except as it relates to marijuana cultivation, shall constitute a misdemeanor punishable as provided in Chapter 1.16. I mean, you have the ordinance in front of you. I mean, that's, it's pretty cut and dry. I'll answer any questions you might have about the Act itself, or the ordinance.
Questions for Eric?
I just, I've never been able to really rectify the fact that marijuana appears to continue to be illegal in the federal government, but it's legal by the states. How does that get rectified? And I know we have a number of states where it is legal. But how does that get rectified? And always, I've always been concerned that perhaps if we allow for marijuana cultivation, I would hate to have federal government say we were no longer eligible for federal grants or something like that. And so that's a picture that I'm not sure is clear, but...
No, and that hasn't been, I mean, that issue has not been settled. It is still illegal under federal law. And a lot of, actually, what was happening when a lot of these dispensaries were opening just went to court because it was against federal law, and a lot of the courts upheld that, yes, because it's against federal law, that some of these could be shut down. But then you had the Lyev Oak's case, and some of these are court cases that came along that said, under the policing powers of cities, from their land use and their zoning, that they could prohibit these uses. But you're right, it hasn't been settled at this point. And I know there's been issues as far as sending money through federal banks as well. So it's, I think it's pretty fluid, and it's going to keep moving, and, you know, like, you don't have to go very far north here, you know, where it's become, you know, dislegalized for public recreational use. And again, I keep in mind, this is an ordinance, right? So ordinances can be, they can be amended, as we probably get a better handle on this and see how this really comes down, starting 2018. You know, the city can always come back and revisit this as directed.
So Eric, I understand that you had Silver and Wright help you craft this ordinance? Is that correct?
Correct. We have Silver and Wright, as you know, they specialize in these types of issues, and also Martha Rice, also.
Okay. Did you look at other cities for what they're doing? Because I attended that workshop that the League of California Cities provided for us last month, I believe it was, and it doesn't see, I believe it's rather harsh to not permit someone from, that has a medical marijuana permit to be allowed to grow a couple of plants in their own home. I think that's pretty harsh. And I don't know, considering how you would enforce it if they're, if they're simply growing a couple of plants. You know, I'm not in favor of having the plantation that we had over here by my house last summer. You know, that was an attractive nuisance, and we didn't have any ordinance in place, which I had encouraged us to do something about, which we hadn't done anything about. And I know that the City of Hillsburg has an ordinance for outdoor grows. You know, I'm not in favor of outdoor grows, but I think that saying that you can't grow it at all when you have a medical marijuana card, and you're growing it in your home for a couple of plants, I think it's a little bit severe. So, you know, I'm not sure how far off the deep end, because I did some research today, too, and the feds are not, they're not prosecuting anybody that's cultivating it for medical marijuana. And that was a year ago, last December, that those headlines came out, so...
And I guess I address it this way. I mean, one, it puts an extra burden on our law enforcement, and it would be our code enforcement, which, you know, we have pretty limited resources to go out and really look at a lot of these grows. It also brings up other issues, too, if people are coming in, you know, I know the City Arcade actually had to come up with an ordinance for indoor grows, because they had 11 houses catch fire, I believe in about a one-year period, from these types of activities.
Those are huge grows, though. I'm talking about a couple...
Sure. So I don't, and I guess what I look at, I don't envision any situation where somebody has two or three plants that they're growing in their house, if, I mean, it's not really going to be attractive nuisance? Is that what we're saying? We're not, it's not going to have a large odor, it's not...
That's what I'm saying.
Probably not going to draw a lot of attention. I don't see, I don't really envision anybody going in and enforcing that. I don't think that we would even have the resources to do that, but I think...
And that's what I'm saying, too, is we don't have the resources to do that, so for...
So I think it makes more sense, at this point, just to have the prohibition. It clears things up for us. And again, I don't, it's the intent of the ordinance.
But if we say you're not allowed to grow it, period, and then we just say, well, we can't enforce it, so people are going to go ahead and grow a couple of plants, and we're really giving them the wink, ha-ha, you can go ahead and grow a couple...
Well, I mean, it comes down to things. Do you allow people to grow in apartments? Do you allow people to grow in single-family residence? I mean, it brings up a whole host of other questions, things that you need to look at. Now, like I said, this is an ordinance, it can certainly go back and be amended, and, you know, we can certainly want to take, give us, give us the extra time to go back and look at that. But as you know, we have till March 1st, 2016.
That's the other thing. It's my understanding, and I had asked our city manager, but apparently, we didn't follow through with that today, Gene. We didn't call Assemblyman Wood's office, and...
They did not call Assemblyman Wood's office, but I asked Mr. Taylor to, you know, call around and see if there's any, you know, legislation out there that would address...
The deadline has been...
I contacted Silver and Wright, they had no knowledge of that. And I also got on the state's website, I couldn't find anything that said there'd been any extension.
If I may comment?
Okay.
Louva Assemblyman Wood has stated that he plans on introducing emergency legislation, and he believes he has the support to pass that, that would either extend or remove the deadline. But that will be after the new year, and of course, it hasn't happened yet.
I understand that, but there's something recent that came out, I think it was on Friday that I heard it on KHSU Public Radio, that said that there was some kind of a glitch in the law, that actually, that there was something that was a misunderstanding, a typographical error, that...
It was the March 1st, 2016 deadline for local agencies to implement an ordinance.
I know, yeah.
And they've indicated that they will plan to hopefully fix that, but as of today, that's not what the law says, so...
Anyway, so the reason we're doing this, in case people don't know, is if we don't pass an ordinance, and we won't, the state will take over, and we won't have any local control, so...
That's correct. That's the way that the law reads right now.
Right. So we have to do something.
I've got to say, I, look, I get worried about the chemicals and chemical use within the city limits. We know what's happened in the hills above Eureka, and it's, that's one advantage, hopefully, that this legislation will help to take care of, is the environmental hazards. But, but again, we're a small, two-square-mile city, and to have those environmental hazards here locally just doesn't seem to make any sense. But, you know, I've thought a lot, I'm trying to approach this very objectively, and to think about the tax dollars that this young man commented on, and certainly, we don't want to bypass those. But at the same time, I don't know if any of you have traveled south and stopped in Garberville. I tell you, Garberville is, is, is one uncomfortable and alarming place. And I don't think anyone here would doubt that it's uncomfortable and alarming, because it's based upon marijuana agriculture. I, so, I'm talking, thank you. But, but I just, I'm so reticent, when our economy is based on tourism, to do anything that would turn it into a Garberville kind of environment. And that's, that's what I can't get out of my mind as we approach this issue.
That's why I'm saying, you know, I definitely don't, I'm not, I'm not in favor of having outdoor grows at all. I think that that needs to definitely be prohibited, but the person that has a medical marijuana card that wants to grow a couple of plants in their own home, I don't, I don't, the herbicide, or the pesticides and the other toxic chemicals you're talking about are used on the large outdoor grows that pollute our streams and kill the little animals that are out in the woods and stuff. Those aren't, I don't think that those are what people use when they grow their own little plants in their own homes, so. And they're not the big plantations that are seen outside of Garberville that attract the negative elements that you're talking about. So I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about the couple of plants inside that somebody has for a medical marijuana card.
I wasn't questioning that. I'm saying that if we bring in business, you might... I wasn't questioning the two-plant family. I am concerned about big agriculture and the kind of climate that it brings to a community like Garberville. I don't want that climate here.
I agree. I don't want that. And I don't know if, have we looked at what the county's ordinance looks like? Have you checked theirs? Because I know they're working through the same process.
Sure. Actually, they got a copy of ours, so there's, I think you're a little behind us, so they're working on, through theirs as well. But again, you know, city versus county, you know, we don't have the acreage and the lot sizes that you would see out in the county, so you're talking about two completely different things.
Oh, I thought that they were, they were done with theirs, so I was misinformed.
Any other comments?
I think that, at this point in time, because of the requirements to meet the March deadline, we have to err on the side of caution. That's the only prudent thing to do right now. We don't, it's a, it would be bad policy to enact an ordinance where you're pressured into doing something that you haven't had enough time to do, the appropriate research to do. That's looking at everything, even as we heard in public comment. We have to have time to look at all that. This has been forced upon us, and not only that, but, but we're going to likely see more legislation this coming year, because at last count, there's, there's three or four possible ballot measures to legalize marijuana. That's going to change some of the dynamics again. We have some time. Put in this ordinance, this is my thought, put in this ordinance that prohibits anything within the city limits right now, and then begin doing the appropriate research for what this is, the possible changes are going to be in our state. And it may be that we look at that as we then re-look at this ordinance over the next year, to say, we want to write in specific provisions, as Councilmember Murray addresses for an individual. We may want to look in and say, no, you can't have grows, but, but an individual dispensary may be able to come in. There's a lot of different things that we can look at. We're just not prepared to do that right now, and we have got to get in front of the state on this. We do not, nobody wants the state dictating what we can or cannot do in the City of Crescent City. Nobody wants that. So I guess I would just ask the public to err with us, if there's an error. I don't know that there even is. But on the side of caution, and simply say, let's prohibit everything for right now by ordinance, knowing we can come back and look at that again, as we see things unfold over the next year in the State of California. But protect our interests here now. Protect local control, and don't cede that to the state. That's a bad idea, always is a bad idea. So we've, we've got opportunity to do that in the, in the months ahead, so. Thank you, Eric, for the work that you've done on this. I think that, I think we're right on for where we are right now.
Mr. Short, anything?
My, my only thought, kind of echoing what Catherine's talking about, is the legal marijuana grower using it for medical use, we certainly don't want to make that person a criminal with a stroke of a panis. Are we considering a grace period for the people who are legally growing in their house now?
No, I mean, this still will come back. The ordinance will come back for a second reading, and then we have to publish it for 30 days before it's enacted. But the problem is, right, when you get, that gets us right to that March 1st deadline. You know, we always give leeway, you know, when we enact these new ordinances, and we certainly, once it's published, we can put out some, you know, public information on it as well.
In addition, if I may, violating the cultivation provisions is not a crime?
No, because we have an exception to that in the ordinance.
Right. So you would get, if anything, a warning that you're in violation of the Municipal Code would be the first step?
And one or, one or two plants probably will not attract the attention of your neighbors, or the law enforcement, or anything. And, yeah, I also have to think that anybody actually growing any marijuana is fairly committed a crime. It's just that the states have said that it's fine, and they're not going to prosecute it through 215.
Okay. Having had our discussion, I am going to open this up to public comment, and I'm going to remind people that we are going to go to three minutes on our public comment, and I will be strict with that when I open up the public. So I now will take public comment, we're going to open up the public hearing on this, and who would like to go first? Please, come on up. Make sure that timer is going. Please state your name.
Connie Morrison.
Thank you.
And I was in the army station that was at Letterman from 1967 to 1969. And they used to have tour buses coming through to show the people the hippies. And Mayor Alioto would block off the intersections on Sundays, and the Grateful Dead would be on one corner, and Jefferson Airplanes would be on the other corner, and Janus would be down there. And it was cool, until, it was cool, it was only marijuana, until cocaine and heroin and all these other drugs infiltrated into the city. So my suggestion would be, make it organic, you can only grow organic marijuana. You cannot do GMOs and make some kind of a weird bush. I used to smoke it. They've, they've taken marijuana now, and if you take a tok off of it, it's like anesthesia. I loved just smoking a little bit, play your guitar, sing a song, dance, I loved dancing. And it was, it was a nice recreational thing. And so far as medicine, I love it, the whole idea. When I lived in San Francisco, there was a whole population of AIDS people who had problems keeping nutrition in them. And it's an excellent, excellent appetizer, brings up your appetite. It's also good for relaxing, bringing your blood pressure down. One thing I think you could relax upon, if there are people growing it, I'm not going to buy anything from him up there, because I don't know what he's put in it, I don't know what his seeds were, I don't want any pesticides. That's why I said organic, organic means no GMOs, no pesticides. And I don't see what it would hurt to grow it outside. It can be small. Two plants is plenty for anybody, for, well, I can't say anybody, but for a whole year's supply. Well, you know, if you have a problem, a medical problem, and you're not, because it gets real, the smell is very potent, and if you're indoors, and plus, you want to grow healthy, anything you grow, you want to make it healthy, and you have sunshine, and that's a real great thing. But people aren't going to buy it from him, because you don't know her, you don't know what they put in their plants. If I can grow it outside, I can just go get my own, you know? So you're not going to have that overabundance. I think that's a good way to get rid of that. That's why those people are growing them, because they can sell it to people. So, and also, in Europe, hemp is another byproduct of marijuana, and it's for clothes, it's a great industrial thing for clothing, and we're the only country that we, I don't know why we freak out about marijuana, but, and also hemp for skin cancer. There's a lot of good things about marijuana, too.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other public comment on this issue? Please come on up.
I just wanted to counter, you know, the cannabis businesses, it's not just agriculture, there would be testing facilities, you would have to have a state-licensed testing facility that could come here. This is a great product to get byproducts, or a great place to get byproducts. Eventually, there's plenty of cannabis being grown in Cave Junction, we could be taking the trim. And like you say, volatile chemicals, it's the same process as making vanilla extract and perfumes, and it's done all around the world in licensed facilities. They do it in Washington and Colorado with cannabis to extract cannabinoids for both recreation and high CBD varieties. These are all things that I think we could bring here. And you guys have had seven months, so it's not like this has been pushed upon you. In fact, you guys have had 20 years. Oakland, Berkeley, they've all gotten ahead of the curve there. They didn't need the cash, but we do. And you guys have had 20 years now, and now seven months. We've been aware of this law, we knew it was going to pass in August. So I don't think we're getting our money's worth, you know? But there's a lot of business that we could bring here that's not just agriculture, and we definitely need a dispensary. And the two unregulated dispensaries that are in town, they do so under the constant guise that they might be arrested any day, and also, none of the products are tested. You know, so here's your chance, you could have had a nice regulation set up, oh, let's put three dispensaries, we've got three liquor stores in town. One of them's got a billboard for Marlboro facing all the southboard, southbound traffic. You know, we've got that. Safeway stocks all of the bottled water with the whiskey. Safeway stocks all of the bottled water with the whiskey. There's nothing else there but alcohol, but you've got bottled water there. You've got to, and Shop Smart, we used to make you go up there to get the milk, you know? So you'd bring your kids, buy the whiskey, there's whiskey down there. The Board of Supervisors bought two pallets of liquor one year. I couldn't get a shoplifter to get picked up on the 3rd of July, because the Board of Supervisors bought two pallets of liquor and served it to the community. I looked at the police records. I didn't see anything about cannabis. It was all alcohol-related, and it was all brought upon by our elected officials. You guys, I mean, you guys, and the Board of Supervisors, I don't know, maybe you do volunteer bartend on the 3rd, but the Board of Supervisors certainly do. So you guys have had seven months, so this isn't something that was just pushed on you, and you've had 20 years, and we have states' rights according to our constitution. So California has taken that position in their constitution that we have states' rights, the ability to make a law. Now, the federal government hasn't caught up with that, but, you know, we were using separate water fountains and that sort of thing in the 50s. We caught up with that, and I think eventually we'll catch up to say, this is states' rights issue, and you guys should have been regulating it since 1996. 1996. And we've been poor the whole time, completely poor. And there's no job that you guys can bring into this county that's not a government job, and not someone who's retired into a decent setting, and we have plenty of impoverished retirees. But everybody else lives in poverty. If you don't have a government job and you didn't retire quite well, you're living in poverty up here. None of the jobs you guys can bring here, if you're paying me 10 bucks an hour, I'm going to live in poverty, and my wife will go make 10 bucks an hour, and together we'll all live in poverty. So you're going to have to bring an industry here that's capable. And while, yes, you're not going to grow agriculturally here, you're not going to do that in the city limits, but you need to set a standard for that we do want this here. We do want this here.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue? Thank you, Connie. All right. Seeing no other public comment, we are close this public hearing, and we'll bring you back up to the council for any further discussion. Is there any further discussion?
I guess I would just say, we're not locking ourselves into anything other than the fact that we are not going to allow the state to dictate what we do. And we can, by doing this, we have the right then to come back and reevaluate what we want the future of Crescent City to look like as it revolves around marijuana. If that involves industry, if that involves personal use, if that involves medical, we have that right to adjust and do what we think is going to be best for our community. If we don't enact something and get this in place tonight, and then with our next meeting, not until the 3rd week of January, and then the 30 days, then we are going to release that right, and the state's going to dictate what we do here, and that we cannot do. We have to do this and then make this a matter of genuine public interest as we look at the future. And I think that's exactly what we're doing. And with that, if there's not any other discussion, I would move...
I agree, we need to pass an ordinance, but I just don't agree on no cultivation at all, so putting that out there.
All right. Motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance, well, I guess we're just waiving, right? We're not actually approving the ordinance. This is a first reading.
Introducing.
Introducing.
I gotta get back to the other page, sorry. That we introduce, waive full reading, read by title only, introducing ordinance 793, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 17.93 Standards for Marijuana to Title 17, zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastel.
Yes, and that passes 4 to 1. Thank you. Okay, we are out of our public hearings. We're now going on to continuing business. Item number 16, consider for approval the final plans and specifications for the 2015 B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project rebid and consider for authorization, the city manager entered into agreement with McLennan Excavation Incorporated to complete the base bid of the 2015 B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project rebid in the amount of $1,467,402. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo.
Now, have Mr. Weir present this item.
All right, Mr. Weir. Welcome back for the bonus round.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gastel, members of the council. So we are back to discuss the B Street project. As has been presented in the past to the council, this project includes replacing the existing clay line between Second Street and the treatment plant along B Street with a new 36-inch diameter sewer line. This will give us the needed capacity to handle some of these big storm events and replace a dilapidated line that has huge consequences if it does fail. So on November 16th, the council authorized us to reject all bids from the first bid and re-advertise with amended plans and specs. So staff went back, we talked to some of the contractors, we tried to understand where some of the costs were. We revised the sewer bypass portion of the specifications as well as the pipe alignment to further facilitate a more cost-effective construction method, and we put the plans back out to bid. Bids were received, and the, all bids were decreased slightly, so the amended plans and specs did do the job, and the apparent low bidder was $220,000 lower than the first bid. Actually, we had four contractors bid the job, same four contractors that bid it originally, and the order of the contractors remained the same. So McLennan was low at about $220,000 lower than his original bid. So the action before the council tonight is to approve a contract with McLennan in the amount of $1,467,402. With this project, though, there's the construction costs, and there's always construction management costs. So we've tried to outline some of those as well as a contingency, because with a sewer line project, or any project for that matter, we don't exactly know what lies beneath the ground or what conditions might arise during the course of construction. So some of those construction management costs or construction costs that are associated with the project, not included in the contract that's before you tonight, would be surveyed. That's estimated to be about $3,000. Material testing at about $15,000. We have our labor compliance, which is a CDBG component that is a very intensive labor compliance operation that Adams Ashby is going to provide for us in the amount of $16,000. And then we have a contingency of approximately about $110,000. It's roughly about 8% of the project. So that totals a total amount of the project of $1,615,000. The CDBG grant that we were awarded includes $1,395,000 for this project, so there is a funding shortfall of approximately $200,000 to complete the project with $220,000, to complete the project with a $100,000 contingency that we may or may not spend, depending on how the project goes. So to account for this, we've identified several projects that are already included in the sewer capital improvement budget that we're proposing to defer to another year to complete this project. These projects that we're deferring aren't projects that are just discretionary projects that we're just not going to do. These are projects that we still need to do. It's just this project and the importance of CDBG and getting it done in a timely manner is vital to the city's ability to obtain the next CDBG grant. So we're proposing to do that as such. We won't have an impact on the budget with the proposed costs. So that is, that is in a nutshell what's before the council tonight. The anticipated schedule for this project, if the contract was authorized, would be to have a notice to proceed go out sometime in mid-January, once all of the bonds and whatnot are acquired by the contractor and the public works agreement is executed. At that point, the contractor will have 60 working days to complete the project. Working days are contingent upon favorable weather, so it's not just a matter of taking the number of working days and simply running the math. We're going to need some help through this winter to get this job done. Hopefully, though, with favorable weather, we can complete it in time to apply for the next round of CDBG. So without any questions from the council?
Why, no? Good job, Eric. Okay, well, with that, no technical questions from the council, and we open up public comment. Is there any public comment on the rebid of the 2015 B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project? Come on up.
So when I moved here, they were just starting to talk about cease and desist orders for the city council, for the Crescent City wastewater treatment plant, and I guess nothing had been really done for years, maybe for years. And in my, so the million-dollar grant that you're getting, Eric sounded like it was kind of really desperate that we'd get this, so we'd get the next one. Is, are we going to fall on the street, or is it, I don't understand what the desperateness is. And I'm really concerned about the ratepayers, because it gets so expensive, and we have 4,000 people to foot this bill. Having they're saying that, I think, like, we need to establish a population level, I think it's real important to establish that the cost, this $43 million was to pay for the harbor effluent that was going into the ocean, and Crescent City got stuck with the bill. And I don't know how we're doing with the payments for the wastewater treatment plant, but other people need to help, and like the Harbor District, because they had a big windfall. I brought one, it's a $177,000 penalty for some of the problems that existed. So million-dollar grant, are we getting assistance from the harbor, or anybody else who hooked into our wastewater treatment plant? I guess Eric would know that.
Yeah, we'll talk to Eric afterwards. Okay, is there any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we're going to close it up, and we'll bring you back to the council for any further discussion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plans and specifications for the 2015 B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project rebid and authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement with McLennan Excavation to complete the base bid for the 2015 B Street sanitary sewer rehabilitation project rebid in the amount of $1,467,402.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastel.
Yes, thank you very much. That passes unanimously. All right, we are on to new business. Item number 17, receive and file the Crescent City Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo.
Mayor, our auditor is going to join us via phone.
Do we need to take a short recess?
We can take probably two minutes to get him on the phone and...
All right, we will take a short recess, not exceed five minutes. All right, we will take a short recess, not exceed five minutes. Back in. Oh, look at that. Mayor Protem touched my gavel.
I protemed.
He protemed me. All right, we are.
It's a new adjective.
We are back. I've been protemed. I might have to consult council about that, about him touching my gavel. Hello. Do we have our auditor on the phone? Because we are now into item number 17. Receive and file the Crescent City Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. Mr. Palazzo, we must.
I'd like to introduce Ahmed Badawi, our auditor. Now, he's met with the audit committee, has spent, he and his staff, a week or so here going through our files and has a presentation for you this evening.
Ahmed, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, they're ready for the presentation.
Okay, is my slide, are my slides on the screen?
Yes, sir.
And I was just wondering, are they moving as I'm changing the slides?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. I'm going to present to you the results of the 2015 audit. First, I wanted to say thank you for the city for being flexible and accommodating me doing a remote presentation. So, I'm going to walk you through, should we look at slide number two, what we're going to cover today and then walk you through who was the engagement team for the city of Crescent City, what were the deliverables of our service and the scope of the audit, areas that we emphasized on, what kind of audit opinion we issued, some of the required communication that we have to communicate to you, and give you an update on the new accounting standards that are coming your way. And then finally, see if, basically, you have any questions. I'm going to start first with the engagement team. And I apologize, I need to ask this question because I am also watching the meeting on video and I'm not seeing my slides moving, so I just want to make sure that my slides are moving, or maybe they're just taking a little bit of time.
They're moving, it's on engagement team right now.
Okay, okay, so I think there's just a little bit delay on my screen when I'm watching the video. Okay, thank you. All right, so the engagement team, I was the engagement partner. We always have a quality control partner and that was Jessie Powell. She's always in the background reviewing my work, making sure that we adhere to professional standards. She never really have any interaction with the city. We have access to an IT specialist in case we need to evaluate some of the city's applications or software. Most of the time when the city acquires software off the shelf, there's no need for an IT specialist. IT specialists is more needed when the city develops its own applications or significantly modify some of the existing applications. The rest of the engagement team, we have Kevin Anderson as the senior and then we have two staff, Kevin, Wang, and Tremaine Patel, that were onsite during the audit for the city. The deliverables and the scope of the audit, we were mainly engaged to report on the city of Crescent City's basic financial statements. Those are statements that reports on all your funds, all your assets, all your programs, basically the overall city activities. In addition, we were also engaged to report on the Crescent City Housing Authority's financial statement. The city is subject to government audit standards which allows us to issue a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. In addition to that, the city is a recipient of federal funds and is required to undergo an compliance audit that we refer to as a senior audit. So, we have issued an opinion on compliance with the federal program.
Yeah, Mike, can we stop you for a second? We lost the connection.
Sure, no problem.
We're trying to reconnect right now. Okay, there we go, you're back on deliveries and scope of the audit.
Okay, perfect, I'm still there. So, basically, I was just listing the areas that we were engaged to report on and I was in the fullest, right before last, we were also engaged to perform an agreed upon procedures on your appropriation limit schedule. And then finally, required to communicate with the governing body, which is what I'm doing today. Areas that we emphasized on during our audit, there were three main areas that we emphasized on. Of course, we looked at all your account balances, but those three areas, we give them more focus and special attention. The areas of revenues and receivables, this is an area that is always considered to be of a higher risk in any audit, not necessarily just for the city of Crescent City. And basically, what we've done in that area is that for your governmental funds, we have validated and confirmed most of your tax revenues with the county, with the state, from property taxes, sales tax, and franchise taxes. We also sent confirmations to a lot of hotels to confirm their transit occupancy tax, which is a big revenue source, as you're probably aware, for the city of Crescent City. For your proprietary funds, like the sewer, for example, we have performed a lot of ratio analysis to make sure that revenues last year, that we understand the changes in revenues year over year, the relation to receivables, and a variety of ratio analysis that we perform on those accounts. Capital assets was another area that we focused on. Obviously, last year, we had an observation or that the city did not have a good list of capital assets and we're not capitalizing capital assets the way it was supposed to and we had a lot of cleanup that was done last year. So, this year, we still look at it as an area of a higher risk just because we wanted to make sure that there were still no leftovers from last year that needed more cleanup. We have tested capital asset activities this year and we found no issues or concerns. And then finally, there was a new accounting standard, new changes on how the city accounts for its pension liability. And I'm going to address that a little bit more detail, but obviously, since this was a new area, we have reviewed management journal entries and we compare those to reports obtained by calculators. We have also obtained reports from calculators, auditors, to verify some of the information provided to the city. And when I go over some of the financial numbers, I will show you what this accounting standard, what kind of impact it had on the city. Moving on, auditor's report. Basically, we have issued an unmodified opinion. That is really the best opinion you can get, is that we did not feel that there was any need to modify the opinion for any reason. The opinion does say that the audit was performed in accordance to the generally accepted auditing standards and in accordance with government audit standards. What an unmodified opinion means, it means that the financial statements are fairly stated and all materialistic, that the accounting policies have been consistently applied, that estimates are reasonable, and that disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. So, basically, in summary, we're saying that we agree with the city's numbers and the city's disclosures. A little bit more detail about the financial numbers, so what we always try to do is to kind of show you a summary of your assets, liabilities, your equity over the last three years, and the changes that are happening there. You know, like, most of our clients, you're to the, most of our cities, the two biggest assets you have are your cash investment and your capital assets. You see that there is a little bit of an increase in cash investment. You know, everything else seems to be pretty much flat. You can see a drop in tax, in accounts and taxes and grants receivable. Definitely, part of it had to do with larger TBBG grants in the prior year, that part of it was receivable and not this year. But also, you see another, a new account called the third outflow of resources and this is really relating to pension. So, it's a new type of account that was added this year that relates specifically to pension. On slide number 11, is a basic summary of your liabilities. Obviously, you can see that you can barely see anything on that slide with the exception of two areas. The long-term debt, of course, that's mainly your sewer and water loans. The net pension liability, so that's a brand-new liability, $6.2 million. When I say brand-new, I don't want to, it's probably not correct. This liability always existed. It's a new accounting requirement for that liability. So, this is not a brand-new liability, this is a liability that existed from a long time ago, but there was no specific accounting requirement to actually include it on the balance sheet. So, now, that's what we're doing, including it on the balance sheet. And you can see a deferred inflow of resources, which is also relating to pension. And both of the deferred inflows and the deferred outflows of resources are really representing differences between actuarial assumptions and between actual results that calculators have experienced. And we're not supposed to be recognizing all these differences in the same year as they occur. You actually do recognize them over a period of time, sometimes five years, sometimes less. So, we keep them in those accounts for this period of time until we fully recognize them into your extension expense. So, that's basically a summary of your liabilities. And then on slide number 12 is a summary of your net position or your equity. Obviously, you can see your biggest equity is in your capital assets, in your infrastructure and your various equipment and capital assets, about $17.3 million. You have about $625,000 in restricted amounts that normally represent, basically, things like restricted money, like gas tax, on stand gas, and, you know, variety of other things. And then the unrestricted amount is that it's under the capital's control. And you can see that this amount went from $6.2 million last year to $1 million this year. And this is purely the result of implementing the new pension standard. So, it's not like the city had losses during the year that we took it away in that equity, but it's just the new accounting standard that resulted in. On slide number 13, you see that, this is a summary of your changes in net position over the last three years or basically your operating results, your net income. And you can see that you did have about $1.6 million in net income. I do want to caution you that this is not necessarily your general fund, this is all the city funds combined using full accrual basis of accounting. So, I will get into the specifics of the general fund in the next slide, but this is just really taking a bird's eye view of all of the city's operations. And that basically is the result of that. But focusing more on the general fund in the next couple of slides, but this is another slide here that basically show you the net cost of service to tax revenues. How we define the net cost of service is that we look at city departments and look at how much does it cost to run those departments and how much revenues those departments are able to generate on their own. So, if we look, for example, at something like public works, we will look at all expenditures necessary to run public works. We will subtract from that any grants that public works are able to generate on their own, any fees that public works are charging to the public. And the net cost or the result of all of that is basically the amount of money that has to be covered by taxes. So, we take the net cost of service and we can add it to the tax revenues and ideally give our tax revenues to be higher than the net cost of service. So, in those two slides, with this one and the next one, the first one is looking at the entire city. So, that is also taken into consideration your enterprise activity, your sewer activity and all of that. You can see that in 2015, the net cost of service was about $1.4 million, tax revenues were about $3.4 million. I decided to add another slide, try to clarify it more that this number looks so good, looks like you have $2 million more in taxes than the actual cost of the service, and that's purely because of the sewer. But once I take the sewer operation out or the enterprise operation out, this will give you a more clear picture about the net cost of service to tax revenue. Because normally, tax revenue does not go to fund any sewer operation. So, this would basically be looking at just your governmental funds and, you know, the public works, the public safety and all these other departments, and how much does it cost to provide the service and how does that compare to the tax revenue? And you can, you can see that you're still in a good position, tax revenues are higher than the net cost of service. It's always a good indicator and we always look for that. Definitely, the big swing between prior year and the current year in the net cost of service was again the TBBG grant that was 2014 and launched in 2015.
Ahmed, we're still back on the government-wide financial, we're trying to reconnect.
Okay.
So, give us a second.
Just let me know.
I mean, we do have the actual slide. We don't have it? I mean, the slideshow, the presentation? I mean, we're having problems with our internet right now. Should we bring that one up and then you just tell us which slide we're going to be on? Ahmed? Yeah, we're on number.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
So, we have a hard copy here of your presentation, so if you'd like, just tell us when to move forward, we'll just go ahead and advance the slides.
Okay, okay, that'll be fine. So, I was basically on slide number 15.
15, okay, hold on. Okay, we're there.
Okay, so on slide number 15, again, I hear we're just focusing mainly on the, what we call the governmental activities, so not including your enterprise fund, your sewer or your water. It's actually the governmental funds, the general fund, your special revenue fund, and we're comparing the net cost of service to the tax revenues. And I was basically mentioning that the tax revenues are higher than the net cost of service and that's a positive indicator. We always look to see whether this is higher or lower and obviously, it looks pretty healthy for the city of Crescent. I'm going to move on to slide 16, and this is focusing mainly on the general fund. We look at your unrestricted fund balance, fund balances have no legal restriction on it, and we compare that to your annual expenditures. And the idea is to basically see how long can you continue to pay your bills if all your governing sources stop coming in, which is obviously a very unlikely scenario. You can see that in 2015, and I apologize, it's like the headings are a little bit cut off, but, so you can't see the years, but actually, 2015 is the column on the right, that's the $1,732,442. 2013 is the column on the left, that's the $1,777. So, basically, what this slide is showing is that your fund balance compared to your annual expenditure is increasing every year. It used to be 23.8% back in 2013, right now, it's 42.71%. Basically, the city was able to add, I believe, about $300,000 or so, a little over $300,000 to the fund balance in the general fund, after taking an extraordinary item of $518,000 that is relating to the, on the loan to the waterfront. So, obviously, the city had a good result in the general fund and added to the fund balance, which obviously makes us feel more comfortable about the financial position of the city. Moving on to slide number 17, basically, this is a summary of your annual pension costs over the last three years. And I would say it's been fairly consistent, 2015, the pension cost is accounted differently. There's, again, the new accounting standard that we implemented this year, so the numbers are accounted differently compared to the prior years, but they still stay within the same range. On slide number 18, this is the funded status of your plan. This is probably one of the first times that this information is actually available because you are part of the pool, so it's always been, you know, that you were just being told, or the city being told, here's your required contributions, but you didn't really have a heartbreaker as to what is your actual liability in the pool. So, now, those liabilities are available. You basically have three different plans. You have the miscellaneous plan, you have the safety police, and you have the safety fire. For each of those plan, we have listed what the plan assets are. And keep in mind, those amounts are as of 6/30/2014. And basically, you can see the plan assets on the first column, then the actuarial liability, that's your pension liability. And then the difference between the two is your unfunded liabilities. So, you have about $4 million in miscellaneous plan, about $2 million for the police plan, and about $150,000 for the safety plan, the fire plan. On slide number 19, that's your OPEC cost. OPEC is other post-employment benefits, specifically, that is our medical benefits. Again, the city is, costs is. Again, the city is, costs is fairly consistent over the last three years, about a hundred and ten thousand in two thousand and fifteen. And the funded status of the plan, this was the most recent actuary of study performed. And as of July first, two thousand and twelve, the plan had about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand in assets and had about close to a million dollars in unfunded liability. And then finally, this part is really the only required part of this presentation and probably the least exciting, so I'm going to try to, you know, go through it quickly. But those are some of the required communications that we have to communicate to the governing body in terms of our responsibility as your auditors versus the city's responsibility. And just go over a few items with you. So I'm going to start on slide number twenty-two. This is our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards. We're mainly responsible for expressing an opinion on whether the city's financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. We're responsible for evaluating internal control over financial reporting, for evaluating compliance with laws and regulations, for evaluating the tone at the top and making sure that management are sending the right messages throughout the organization about importance of internal controls, about the consequences of committing frauds, of not following procedures. So we're responsible for evaluating that, responsible for ensuring that the financial statements are clear and transparent, and finally, for communicating with the governing body. On slide number twenty-three, this is management's responsibility towards the audit process. Management is responsible for the financial statements, even though we audit those statements and we give an opinion on them. Our audit only provides reasonable assurance. We only look for material items. So at the end of the day, still the responsibility for the completeness and accuracy of those financial statements resides with management. Management is responsible for establishing and maintaining internal control over financial reporting, making all financial records available to us during the audit process, for addressing the financial statements to correct material statements. Management is responsible to establish internal control and detect frauds, inform us of all known and suspected frauds, comply with laws and regulations, and take corrective action on audit findings. Our independence, we are your independent auditors, so we have to remain independent from the city. This is solely our responsibility. We follow the rules of the AICPA and the California Board of Accountability. We evaluate all additional services that we provide to the city to make sure that none of them would impair our independence. And we also acquire circulate questionnaires with our staff to ask me then to identify any direct or indirect relation with the city. And of course, we make sure that no one with direct or indirect relation to the city is part of the audit team. Timing of the audit, so I have to really highlight something here, that the timing of the audit, the audit was performed in accordance with what we agreed to with the city. I do want to highlight the fact that last year, my presentation to the city council was on February fifth. Today is December twenty-first, so that is a month and a half earlier than last year. Obviously, the credit for that goes to the city. City management and city finance department, not only that they're very strong technically and they provide very adequate responses to our audit requests, but they're also very cautious of time and dedicated to really get this process completed timely. So it was very, it was a pleasure working with the city. And definitely, this is credit to city staff for being able to basically finish the audit in that timely fashion. This year, like I mentioned, there were significant accounting policies that were adopted this year, Gatsby Statement sixty-eight and seventy-one related to pensions. Those were really the ones that the city adopted. The city have also looked at Gatsby Statement sixty-nine for government combinations and disposals of government operations and determined that that was not applicable to the city. In terms of management judgment and accounting estimates, some of the numbers you have in your financial statements are not actual numbers, but they're really based on estimates, totally acceptable as long as there is a reasonable basis behind the estimate. So we have evaluated management basis and determined that there was no bias in management estimates and that the basis was reasonable. And just wanted to show you some of the accounts that are really estimates and not actual numbers. You know, these are life of capital assets, allowance for uncollectible accounts, pension plans, retiree medical benefit plan, all of these are estimated numbers. Some of the sensitive disclosures, basically some of the important disclosure in your financial statement, cash and investment note, talk about the different risks that your investments are exposed to and what you're allowed to invest in by California code and by your investment policy. Things like the defined benefit pension plan, talk about actuarial assumptions that were used in developing the pension liability. And describe the pension plan itself and how the contributions work and how many members are in the plan. So these are some examples of some of what we think are important disclosures in the financial statements. In terms of difficulties encountered in performing the audit, we're pleased to say that we had no difficulties. Like I mentioned earlier, we actually saw that the audit went very well and that our requests were addressed timely and adequately. So we were very pleased with the process. There were no adjustments or re-plasifying entries during the course of the audit. That's obviously a big reflection on what the finance staff are doing, is when the auditors come in and they have all sorts of adjustments, that reflects or that basically means that finance did not book everything that they were supposed to book or did not do everything timely that they were supposed to. The fact that we had no adjustments is really a very despondent indicator that this was not the case, that finance had recorded everything properly. Obviously, with the implementation of Gatsby sixty-eight, we had, we provided some assistance to the city, so we had some corrections to the entries, but we don't really consider those to be adjusting entries. There was the city attempting to camera bozos Gatsby sixty-eight or pension entries and then re-reviewed them, suggested some changes to them, but it was not really an actual adjusting entry. So also regarding potential effect on the financial statements of any significant risks and exposures, we are not aware of any significant risks or exposures besides the intended legal matters that were communicated to us in the confirmations we sent to the outside legal We are pleased to report that we had no disagreements with management. We also had no material weaknesses identified during our audit. If you recall, last year, we actually had a couple of findings. We had one about the city not being in compliance with the requirements of the sewer loan and the water loan, that the city had to maintain reserve accounts per the agreement of these loans, and those were not maintained. So this was addressed during this year, two thousand and fifteen. And also, we had a finding about capital assets and the city's having to restate its previously issued financial statements, and this year, this was not the case as well. On slide number twenty-nine, we have requested certain representations from management that are included in the management representation letter since December eleventh. So any time before we issue our audit opinion, we have to have management submit a letter to us that is signed by the city manager and by the finance director. And this letter is letting us know that the city have recorded all transactions, that they own all the assets, that they are not aware of any frauds, among those of representations that management has provided to us, and we put some reliance on those representations. We're not aware that management has consulted with any other auditing or accounting firms regarding auditing matters. On slide number thirty, besides our engagement letter and the representation letter, we had no other significant communications with the city. We're not aware of any material uncertainties relating to events and conditions. We have not become aware of any instance of fraud or illegal acts which have caused those frauds by management. And then finally, on slide number thirty-one, this is a listing of the new accounting standards that will be coming away over the next three years. I would say that probably the most significant of them would be the one in two thousand and eighteen, the statement for post-employment benefits other than pension. This is really the retiree medical benefits. So you would be required to add the unfunded liability on the balance sheet, same like within your pension this year. So as of July two thousand and twelve, this unfunded liability was about a million dollars. So obviously, this number changes, so by the time we get to two thousand and eighteen, it may be a different number, smaller or bigger, not sure. But you would be required to add this number to your balance sheet. I think other than that, most of the new accounting standards are not significant. I mean, obviously, we will work with the city determining how they're going to impact the city and recommend to the city the best way to implement them, but the most significant I believe would be in two thousand and eighteen. With that, I want to really thank you and I want to say that, again, we're very pleased to provide service to the city. Last year was our first year with the city and we have identified some issues that stood in prior to even us providing work for the city. But finance and city management were very quickly in addressing all of our concerns. And I have to say, this year, it was a very, very pleasant audit and probably went very smooth. So we're very thankful for city staff for their assistance. And I'm really happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you for the very thorough report. Is there any questions for Mr. Badawi? Oh, here we go. I just have one. Hello, Mr. Badawi, this is Rick Holly from the Audit Committee. How are you doing? As we look at the way this audit went, I know that when you met with Mayor Gasino and I earlier, you indicated you were going to take a better look at the capital assets and make sure we were accounting for those appropriately, and I'm glad that went well. I knew that was one of the areas that you were going to be looking at. But really, my question has to do with pension plans. You know, we look at those numbers having to do with pension plans and we see millions of dollars of unfunded liabilities. And I just can't quite understand how we get there. I mean, you have a PERS cost and the city pays its PERS and the employee pays their share of PERS, they retire and they continue to receive PERS. Where does the additional liability come from, I guess? I know that there's some shared, if you're a medically eligible PERS person, there's a little bit of shared cost, but it doesn't account for the millions of dollars we're talking about. So can you explain to me how we get several million dollars' worth of unfunded liabilities?
I'm trying my best. I'm not an actuary, but I can definitely talk about it. I may not do as good of a job as an actuary, but I'll do my best. I think the reason why, technically, if you always paid the cost of the new benefits that are being earned every year from the very beginning, technically, you would not have an unfunded liability. I think the reason or how this happened is the way CalPERS and the way the accounting standards allowed you in the past to basically account for those liabilities. So let's say, for example, you know, the market, when it crashed in two thousand and eight, all these losses on investments were not immediately recognized in your pension plan. They were actually spread over fifteen years. So what's causing those liabilities to happen is that every time something changes in the plan, either investment earnings or new benefits been offered or salaries have increased, they take these changes and they spread over very long periods of time. The main purpose of that was to kind of smooth the effect of these changes and so you don't see fluctuation in your required contributions to the pension plan, but also smoothing too much have basically caused really the benefits not to be paid that, or the plan not to be funded appropriately, because every time the market side set of you putting money, more money in the plan, you're actually spreading it over fifteen years. And that creates an unfunded liability. So CalPERS and the accounting standards have, are taking action to try to minimize that by reducing these periods of time where you're allowed to spread these changes. So there are no more fifteen years that you can spread, the maximum, I believe, is five now. And the intention of that is to really have the employees pay for their benefits while they're employed and the city to pay for those employees' benefits while they're employed. What's happening right now is that current employees are really paying for the people who already retired. So that's why you're seeing those liabilities. But those liabilities also changes, if the market crashes tomorrow, you would see that liability is becoming much bigger, even if nothing else has changed. So it's really very dependent on the market and on your contribution rate and what CalPERS was spreading and smoothing over periods of time.
So we didn't really have any, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we didn't have any real control over this. These were PERS decisions that were made that impact all the individual entities at a later time.
That is true. I mean, I think part of the cost of being part of a pool, being part of a pool have advantages and disadvantages. In the past, being part of a pool saves you some costs because you're sharing some costs with other members, but at the same time, if you had extra money and you want to pay down your liability, you are not able to do that. Only recently that CalPERS have now allowed you to do that. Before, you did not have the option to do that, to pay down your liability. Now you do. You can take action and say, we have money, we want to pay down those six million dollars. However, paying down the six million dollars, it does not mean that there are no new liabilities that's going to pop up in the future. Because if you pay down the entirety today and then the market crashes tomorrow, creates a brand-new liability. So that's why, basically, there were plans, there were several plans years ago that were super-funded where basically they had assets more than liabilities. And this has changed over the last few years as the market changed and the benefits have increased. So that's of all of that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Badawi? See, no questions. Open up the public comment. Is there any public comment? Three minutes. Come on up.
Mr. Palazzo, I don't mean to target you, but I was kind of concerned because of what I saw in the newspaper about your pay. You started out at ninety-eight thousand, and I worked it out percentage-wise and it came, my math came out ten thousand dollars or so short of the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars you were making at the end. What my question is, is you're leaving us and do you get like a retirement? Because you started out at ninety-eight thousand, what's the difference between ninety-eight thousand and your retirement and a hundred and twenty-five thousand over, you've been here eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, four years? And that's a big expense. And Regina, he just left, and who else? I'm questioning the merit pay and how often it's given out and because it doesn't come from any place, and especially when you're tagging on these to people's property tax and people are being foreclosed on, and especially when there's only four thousand people in the city that you're managing. That's my comment.
Thank you. See any other public comment on our audit report? Okay, see no other public comment. We'll close the public comment and bring you back to the board. Any further discussion?
I just, congratulations to all of our hard-working team that put this all together for us. This is the best audit that I've seen since I've been on the council, so good job, everybody. everybody. And, uh, thank you to our auditors as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we just need to receive this. Do we need a motion on that?
Just accept report and file.
All right. So do I have a motion to accept and file this audit report?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we receive and file the Crescent City Annual Financial Report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015.
I'd like to second that report, that report.
Motion.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protemin Score?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Badawi. Enjoy the rest of your weekend and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Weekend.
Have a good evening.
All right. Okay, on to item number 18. Consider and approve or revise memorandum, memorandum of understanding for Wonderbus and early literacy and family engagement services authorized city manager to sign. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo, I know I should have moved it up.
And I'll be very brief, uh, on this item. It's been waiting patiently for this item all evening. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, yeah, this is an item that, uh, it was presented before the council, uh, as a presentation of two meetings ago, I believe. Uh, we, we informed the council of working on a revised contract with the different partners that are involved with the Wonderbus. This is the revised contract. Uh, there was one correction that staff did recommend to add. Um, it's kind of an out clause if, um, you know, the council can review this on an annual basis and, uh, decide not to fund it, you know, then the, um, the term of the agreement does allow that. Uh, the funding for the city is a thousand dollars a year. It's something that we funded for many, many years. I, I don't know how long this goes back, uh, but it's something that is, uh, very important to our community. Uh, so I would recommend approving this agreement, uh, with the, the other partners and, um, continue to fund the Wonderbus.
We have a special guest in our audience right now.
Melody Fugate, uh, with the Delmar Chalker Council. I'm one of the, um, partners. Um, so what we did was we added this clause under the, under the term. Um, and it's, uh, basically just states, um, what Mr. Palazzo has already said and that is, it's, it's basically an out because this is a five-year MOU. And so, um, we understand that budgets, um, you know, can fluctuate. So we wanted to give all of the collaborative partners, um, an annual, um, chance to review their budgets to see if they could commit, um, you know, to the $1,000 annual contribution. And it goes through the maintenance fund for the Wonderbus. So I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from the council for Ms. Fugate?
Mr. Edsco? Not good?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to open this up public comment. Anybody wants to comment on the city funding the Wonderbus for $1,000 a year for five years?
Five years.
Five years. Okay. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close public comment and we'll come back to the council for any further discussion or motion.
I think this is a hugely valuable asset to our community and, um, if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the revised MOU for the Wonderbus and early literacy and family engagement services and authorize the city manager to sign.
I just have a question for staff before we, we vote. Uh, a, a note that, that this, the revised MOU is going to have to go back to all the other partners. Is that going to mean that we're going to withhold our $1,000 contribution until all of them have signed off on this?
Take direction from the council. We can make our contribution as directed.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'd like to second, um, Councilmember Murray's motion to approve this with the stipulation that we send our $1,000, uh, without waiting for the other.
Without further ado.
Yes, so.
We will do that. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second with the stipulation to send our $1,000. The check is in the mail. So please pull the vote.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protemin Score?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you for waiting.
Yes, thank. We're on to item number 19. Consider an authorize, an authorization. Consider for authorization, the city manager to advertise and see bids for the Crescent City Fire Hall seismic retrofit project. Take action as necessary and appropriate.
I will introduce Mr. Weir to present this item.
Mr. Weir, thank you.
So as, uh, Mr. Taylor said when I came over, he's very excited to see the, uh, the next PowerPoint for this project as this project's been a, been a long time coming. Um, and so it's before the council, not just authorize us to go out to bid. But it's a little late in the evening and this is a pretty complicated project, so we'll, uh, we'll run through it. And it's been, it's been before the council a number of times, so I'll keep the background fairly short. But in 2013, the city was awarded a CalOES hazardous mitigation grant to do a seismic retrofit on our current existing fire station that's located at Fifth and I Street. Station was a good timing with the fire engines in the background there. Nice, uh, nice of Steve to do that.
Really is.
Uh, the, uh, so the original fire station was built in 1953, uh, and is in desperate need of seismic rehab. We, uh, performed a study on it and, you know, in summary, basically it would not stand a, uh, the sizable earthquake that is predicted for our particular area. Uh, we house a lot of emergency equipment within that building, uh, emergency equipment that we're going to need in the, in the event of a seismic earthquake that, uh, that a lot of people are going to need fire response because of. Uh, so with that, the city was authorized a seismic, uh, seismic grant from CalOES to complete that. Stover Engineering was authorized to complete the design in August of 2014 and in May of 2015 with, or 2014, I believe, the, uh, I'll have to run back here. In May of 2015, that was brought back to the council and the council actually authorized additional scope of work for Stover Engineering to, to have them complete the design for the modernization of the building. The, to seismicly retrofit this building, wouldn't complete all of the improvements that this building needs. This building was built in 1953. It still looks like it was built in 1953. There's a lot of upgrades that need to be done. Uh, the seismic grant only, only functions to do the improvements necessary to keep the building standing in an earthquake. So that includes the sheer walls on the outside and includes new siding. It includes a new steel moment frame on the front bay doors, but it does not include any of the modernization. So with that, uh, with that amendment to Stover's contract that then embarked on a modernization set of plans as well. Funding for this project is also a, a complicated matter in which we have the CalOES grant and you have our required match. And then you have another component which has come in and the council's authorized city staff to work with the Elk Valley Rancheria. And we have applied for an ICDVG grant to help us fund the building modernization portion as well as a, as well as purchase of a new truck. So the timing never quite works out like you would hope. So we're, we're in need now to go out to bid as this is the best time to build a, or bid a building project. Middle of winter, a lot of contractors are hungry. You want them to bid on your project now so that they don't fill their schedule up full of work and then have to try to squeeze you in and, and that your bids aren't going to be near as competitive. Uh, so that's why we're going out to bid now. We will not know the status of our ICDVG grant application until February. So as such, we have structured this bid to include the base bid, which is the seismic portion and all necessary components for that, for that construction, which is ADA upgrades that we need to do as well as, as well as improvements to the exterior ADA sidewalks. So that's included in the base bid. And then because we don't know how we're going to fund the building modernization, in this bid, it's broken into five alternatives. And the five alternatives are alternative one, which is to replace the main electrical panel. And then you have alternative two, which is to complete the rest of the electrical portion. You have alternate three, which is to, uh, to do the kitchen remodel. Alternate four, which is to install a washer extractor in the fire hall. And then alternate five, which is to redo all of the interior finishes, that sheetrock paint, sort of all of the finishing touches on it. The electrical's broken into two components, alternate A, alternate two, because you need to do some electrical improvements to do the kitchen remodel or the washer extractor. So once this comes back to the council, once we actually know the alternatives, we know the status of the grant, then we can make a recommendation such that the council could approve any or, or all of these improvements. So say if you want to do the kitchen remodel, you would have to approve alternate one and alternate three. You wouldn't necessarily have to do alternate two. So that's, that's why it's broken down like that. Uh, I do have a brief slideshow of some of the architectural plans, just to, uh, to get it in front of the council, what exactly we're doing. So this first slide shows some of the improvements to the front area as far as the accessibility goes with the parking lot improvements, a new accessible walkway into the department, a new walkway from the, uh, from the existing sidewalk. This is a, uh, plan of the existing fire hall. You can see we have four small apparatus bay doors. These are, these worked fine for the engines that were designed in 1950s, but they don't quite work so well now. And, you know, you have about two inches clearances, I'm sure Councilmember Short can attest to, between the mirrors and, and hitting the side of the building, which has been done in the past. Uh, you also have, you know, non-compliant ADA restrooms and whatnot. Here's a, an exterior shot of the current building. Uh, here's the backside of the current building. And then this is the proposed improvements where you can see that the four bay doors have been removed and you're left with two bay doors with large roll up doors to accommodate the, the engines. Uh, there's improvements made to the bathroom areas. You see some of the front, uh, entryway is also detailed out there. Uh, you'll, you'll notice in these plans, the kitchen is quite small and it is still the original design that is, that is currently there now. So there'll be later plans that show in more detail what exactly the kitchen remodel's going to entail. Uh, there's the upstairs portion as well. Upstairs, there's not a lot of improvements to be made to the upstairs, uh, but there are going to be some for the information technology component. Fire hall is set to be a center stage for the city's IT infrastructure and coordinated with the IT administrator Fritz Ludeman. He wants to eventually migrate a lot of the city's servers there and then all the connectivity would be gone through the fire hall. It'll also stage well for the, uh, for a field EOC that this station might become.
All right. What's an EOC?
EOC is the Emergency Operations Center. So what, what happens, or at least is what happened in, uh, some of the recent EOC events is the Washington Fire Station houses the county EOC. So as that station evolves and as that Emergency Operations Center becomes up and functioning, a lot of the county administration and the actual Emergency Operations Center takes over that building. What then happens is the fire department and a lot of the field personnel don't have their fire station anymore because it's turned into the county Emergency Operations Center. So with a building like this that could be retrofitted like is being proposed, what could happen is a lot of the field personnel could then go to this particular location and they could operate out of this location versus right now, they don't really have a home. Uh, you can see this, this plan shows the, uh, the exterior elevations of the proposed improvements. You can see the two new bay doors. Uh, the existing storefront is also set to be replaced and the windows, uh, will be replaced due to the fact that they're going to have to take off the siding and, and reinforce those exterior walls with new sheer walls. So they're going to go and replace all the windows as well to accomplish that. Uh, see the backside here, new hardy plank siding. Current siding is asbestos siding and so that's going to need to be removed. It's a hazardous material. We'll get rid of that, dispose of it and, uh, replace it with the cement board siding that holds up well to our climate. See, these are the, uh, the upstairs improvements, I believe, as well as the kitchen. This is the kitchen, uh, plan. So this is the existing kitchen, I believe, here. And then this is the proposed new kitchen. Uh, you can see though, they moved the wall back. There's a lot more room. There's a large stove here to help accommodate feeding, you know, a large group, uh, such as the, uh, the field personnel that might accompany this building. Uh, and there's more kitchen space. So there's the elevations of the new proposed kitchen. New stainless steel cabinetry is also proposed. Here's the engineer's estimate for the base bid project, which is in the upper portion here, approximately $987,000 for the base bid portion of the project. And then each of the alternatives listed below. Again, funding for this project, uh, $686,000 from the CalOES grant. We have a hazardous, uh, the hazardous mitigation match that has already been included in this year's budgets, $225,000 from the city. And then additional funding authorized to cover the, uh, the estimated construction expenses as well as, uh, construction related costs that the city authorized at the last meeting of $254,000. That'll get you in the, in the ballpark of funding the base bid. The unknown comes with the ICDVG grant and then also what the bid alternatives are going to come in at. So what is proposed is we put this project out to bid now. We get our bids, we'll come back to the council. We probably still won't know the status of the ICDVG bid at that point. So at that time, if, if the bids come in, uh, where we think they are going to come in, we'll ask the council to authorize the base bid, basically get the contractor started. In the contract, and there's a, there's a typo on the staff report, but in the contract, it's requested that the contractor hold their bid alternate prices for 90 days. It says 120 in the staff report, but it's 90 days from the bid date. This will allow us time then to fully understand the status of the ICDVG grant, whether we received it or not. And then at that time, we'll come back to the council either with the ICDVG grant or we'll come back for them to evaluate the bid alternatives with the contractor that we have. Questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Weir, if, we've, we've authorized an additional funding, the 254, 572 within the base bid and then 201, 667 for the modernization. And looking at these alternates, um, so let's just say in a perfect world, the bid came in exactly at the estimate that, that the engineer and architect put together. Uh, are the alternates, with the exception of, I'm guessing, the electrical panel upgrade, are any of these things standalone, realistic standalone items that we could say, well, we want to do that? I mean, I'm just thinking, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense that we're going to be able to do a kitchen remodel if we're not doing the electrical. I mean, there's, so with the, with the $201,000 that the council has already allocated, what could we do if the, if the ICD, IC, whatever, you know what I mean? Yeah, the other grant doesn't come through. What could we do with the money we've already allocated?
Well, and that's, that was the basis for, for how these alternates were split out. So that alternate one, that main electrical panel upgrade, that includes the electrical panel and the electrical components that you would need to do in the kitchen. So you could, you would have to select alternate one and then you would select alternate three. So that would be a total in this estimate of approximately, say, $85,000.
Okay.
So, you know, that would be within that $200,000. Uh, you know, really the, the only option that's, that's not is that alternate, that alternate number two, and that's the complete upgrade of the electrical throughout the building. Uh, and we'll just have to evaluate that and see, see when the bids come in. Uh, there's several benefits to trying to complete that during this project. You know, all of the walls are going to be stripped at that point, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's not going to be any less expensive than what it's going to be right now to try to do that. But again, that's, that's going to come down to a funding choice once we know all those different alternatives. But to answer your question though, yes, that, that's, that was the, the basis of the structure of those alternates is to say, okay, you're going to have to do some electrical and we realize that with any of these other components. So we'll make that sort of a standalone electrical and that way you can then choose any of those other alternatives to go with it.
That's great. Thank you. That's very, very helpful and very proactive thinking on, on your guys' part to, to provide that opportunity. Appreciate that.
Just real briefly, Eric, I, I was wondering what happens, uh, during the construction period with all the equipment? Do you have a plan to move there?
So we have been, uh, we've been in conversation with Chief Wakefield. A lot of the apparatus will be relocated possibly to, to the Washington station. Uh, there's some other stations around that, that do have some room.
Ah.
So that's where the majority will go. Obviously with a project like this, it's a good opportunity to, uh, to evaluate exactly what you have, similar to if you're moving, you know, from house to house. So, so it'll be, uh, it'll be an opportunity to clean house a little bit as well. But a lot of the apparatus will just be But a lot of the apparatus will just be stored at other, uh, emergency facilities.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions? Okay, you want to open this up to public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll close it up, bring you back to council. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to...
Authorize.
Authorize the city manager to advertise and receive bids for the Crescent City Fire Hall?
I'll move that we authorize city manager to advertise and receive bids for the Crescent City Fire Hall seismic retrofit project.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Minscor?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you. Okay, there'd be no other items on our agenda. Oh, wait.
Will adjourn?
Oh, wait.
Yeah. Uh, item number twenty. Accept resignation from the city manager Eugene M. Palazzo and discuss the process for appointing interim city manager and recruiting for a permanent city manager. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, I, uh, prepared a brief twenty-minute, minute presentation for this item.
Move to approve.
And real briefly, and reflecting back to one of my first council meetings that I attended, uh, for the city, I, I was in the position of informing the city council that we're, uh, spending about five hundred thousand dollars from our general fund, uh, reserve to, to balance the general fund and, and that reserve was depleting very rapidly. And we had to do, uh, some drastic measures to, you know, stop the bleeding, I think is, you know, my quote that I, you know, stated at the council. And, and, um, we've come a long way, you know, since that meeting in the last four and a half years. I'm very proud of what the city's been able to accomplish under, you know, good leadership of the city council, good staff. Uh, we have, you know, an awesome, uh, senior staff directors, uh, that are managing the city. Uh, at this time, I, I feel very comfortable that, you know, we're moving in a very good direction, you know, with implementation of our strategic plan. Um, we have balanced budgets, uh, and it's, um, you know, at this time, it's for, uh, time for me to kind of get closer to my family. And I've had an opportunity to do that. So, I'd like to, uh, to remember my resignation and, and ask the council have that effective on, by, on January twenty-second of two thousand and sixteen. The next steps, uh, for the city council at this time would be twofold. One, to have an interim, you know, step in, uh, to hire a permanent city manager, depending on, on the direction of the council. Could take up to six months, uh, on an interim, uh, basis. Uh, I think there's seen a lot of qualified people out there given an advertisement. You may have some people internally or within the community that may want to apply as well. Uh, but I would recommend the city council to, uh, you know, direct the HR manager. Uh, can certainly, and work with the councils as much as you like, uh, to, you know, solicit applications. Uh, recommend that, uh, you know, possibly the mayor, you know, work with HR manager and then, uh, sometime first week, second week in January, have a closed session meeting in the city council to review those applications and possibly interview applicants, uh, for the interim position. For, you know, uh, uh, next steps to hire a full-time city manager, two ways to do that. You can, um, you know, again, go out, solicit applications, uh, and, yeah, direct our HR manager, work internally to, you know, do a recruitment or you could hire a recruitment firm to, you know, do a, uh, a search, you know, for your next city manager. Some possibilities there. I'd like to get some council discussion and direction on both those items.
So, do we need to accept his resignation through a resolution? Or?
They accept my resignation prior to discussion of interim.
Right.
Would probably be the best way to do that.
Yeah. Yes?
Yes, we'll need to accept his resignation this evening.
Just by motion?
By motion, yeah.
Just by motion.
I regretfully make a motion that we accept, um, our city manager's resignation effective January twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen.
You guys all second that?
So, we have a motion, regretful motion, and a regret, regretful second to accept the recognition. The recognition? No.
Resign.
The resignation of the city manager. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Minscor?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
I don't want to accept it, but I understand the reasons and yes. So, that passes unanimously and...
And I appreciate the support of this council and previous councils. It's, uh, been a pleasure working for the community.
I, I'd just like to say congratulations to you. It sounds like a great opportunity for you and, uh, we'll miss you. Yeah, get close to your family, which is very important. Okay, uh, now that his seat is warm and he's gone, we need to replace him. So, we need to have some discussion on what we want to do, uh, for our interim. Six months. Interim. Interim. Uh, city manager, um, do we want to have our HR department go out and discuss it? Uh, um, send something out, get some contacts? Uh, you know, me and Gene have been talking about it and, and there's a couple of, of candidates already out there that are, just do interim work. And, uh, but we would accept, you know, whoever else would want to throw their hat in the ring.
I, I have had, uh, some solicitation by two individuals that actually sent resumes that, uh, would like to be considered for interim. Uh, that's something the council can take a look at.
I, I'd like to have a closed session meeting as soon as possible, actually.
Do, do we need to have, uh, the action of, uh, sending out word to get, um, applicants first before we actually do a meeting?
Maybe have, uh, Ms. Rice address the closed session idea.
All right, thank you.
We can have a closed session as soon as we have some applicants to discuss.
Because it's a personnel matter, so...
Right, at that point, it's, uh, personnel-related, but personnel issues generally have to relate to particular individuals and not just policies in general. So, once we get a few applicants to discuss, then you could have a closed, not closed session.
I, I, I would think at some point, we'll need to have, uh, some kind of an ad hoc subcommittee or something to work with, with human resources, uh, as we go forward. So, I don't know if that's something we want to consider tonight, uh, appointing a couple of people to, to help maybe, to, to provide some guidance on behalf of the, of the council. But I think in the end, when we have, uh, we have a candidate, I, I think we'd all like to be involved in that selection. Are we talking about interim or permanent? I think I'm talking about both, probably.
And just recently, we heard the statistic that city manager typically sticks around for two and a half years. Like to explore some ways to...
Keep him here?
Maybe, maybe keep him here.
Well, Gene said he'd come back after everything was cool.
Yeah. Ms. Rice, just a, a question then for clarification. Then, when it comes to looking at the position itself, that has to be done in, in open session such as this? We can only talk about personnel matters if we're talking about either hiring somebody specifically or someone who's already employed?
Basically, yes. I mean, general policy type issues are, or general discussions are open session. And process is open session.
Okay.
Now, for our interim city manager, we'd want to, uh, advertise that regionally. Would probably be, be good within the county and any other California. Southern Oregon maybe.
Absolutely. I mean, if you want to, you know, there's, uh, we serve through the League of Cities that you can advertise that, you know, through. You know, we can reach out to, you know, just kind of a network of other city managers who's out there that would be interested in doing interim positions.
Um, so, anybody have a calendar out?
I, I do, um, would you like to borrow it? Or Rick does, but, um, so we, it'd be nice if we could get somebody on board before Gene leaves.
Right. So, we're under the gun here. Um, let's see. First, uh, week of January.
Is the seventh.
Seventh.
Is the Monday. No, fourth.
Fourth is Monday. And we got a special, uh, Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting. And it's our first council meeting. No, that one actually...
We're not having a council?
No, we don't have that one right there. That was, well, you know, what do you guys think? Think we can get it together by then? I mean, it's vacation. All of the good stuff.
So, is our, is our, is our goal, if we, if we're talking about meeting as early as the fourth, is our goal simply to review whatever applications or resumes or whatever we have in hand?
Right. Well, we wouldn't have them because the first, the holiday, um, are we giving Thursday a holiday also, the thirty-first?
I have two meetings on Thursday. I have the airport and I have, uh, secure rural schools that night, the seventh.
I, I guess my, my, my thought is, is, well, I, I, I see the, the value of trying to get this done prior to Mr. Palazzo's leaving. I don't want us to shortchange the process, nor do I want us to feel expedited and say, well, we only have two, so we've got to choose between those two. I think that that, I don't, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, of that. And it's just, it just happens to be where we're falling at this time of year with holidays and everything else. I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with trying to process that decision that quickly.
Chew-horned in, yeah. I think we have to have some environment where we can discuss what we want in an interim person. Because we, we, do we want this person to help recruit the, the new city manager?
Well, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a bigger discussion than just...
And, and so, we need to have those factors down before we can go through a selection process, I think.
But what I'm hearing is, is we can't have that discussion in closed session.
We have to have it now.
We either stay here tonight and get that figured out or we, or we put that on the agenda for our, uh, January nineteenth meeting and we accept that, that we will have to operate day-to-day much like we did, uh, when Mr. Palazzo was on vacation.
Or you can call, or you can call a special meeting first week in January and discuss it then.
Yeah.
An open, open...
Yeah, we can...
Get an open session and, and in the meantime, we can, uh, you know, staff can, we can kind of reach out and see who's out there, um, that may be of, of interest. You, you can direct staff to, um, kind of advertise and seek applications and see, you know...
January fourth is the second week in January, maybe? No, I don't, January, I don't, I don't want to do it January fourth.
No, second week, how about the second week in January?
Every look at their committee assignment.
Somebody else's, I don't think there'll be any other Monday. The only other Monday meeting that I know right now is, in the afternoon, is LAFCO. That's at three o'clock and that's not to the fourth.
That's at the end of the month.
That's the fourth. I don't think there's anything else on Monday.
No, they keep them big and...
Chamber, but that's at noon. That's no big deal.
What about the, so like maybe January eleventh?
That'd be fine. For me.
I would be fine for January eleventh.
I would as well.
You just have to make sure.
Sure, that would be.
All right.
At what time?
Three-thirty or later.
Well.
Yeah, this is the interim, so...
Four, five, the...
I'm good anytime. Four P.M.?
Four.
Like we did our interviews for...
Four o'clock on the eleventh.
So, do you need a, do you need a motion to call a special meeting?
Yeah, we need a, a motion to call a special meeting. Uh, Ms. Rice does have, how late can you stay on Monday, eleven? Ms. Rice only has until five-thirty.
We should be able to do it by, in an hour and a half.
I sure hope so.
And, yeah, you know, just kind of a, a question for Ms. Rice. Can they have an open session and then go into closed session if they get applicants that they can discuss?
Yeah, we can schedule it for both. And then if, um, closed session isn't necessary, we don't have to have it.
After. Have closed session.
Right, we just have to make sure that it's agendized that way. Um, but by the time the posting comes up, uh, the time to post the agenda, we would know.
Then we just have to make sure if this room isn't available, we can have it.
Yeah, that's right. Do we know if this room? We have no way of knowing if this room's available.
Well, we can have it at, at wastewater treatment facility if not.
We have various options for locations.
Okay. I'm good with the eleventh at four. If everybody else is...
Yeah. And my preference would be to, to focus on what we're looking for as opposed to voting on anybody that night. Because if we're, if, if part of the process, point of the meeting is to define what we're looking for, I just, I'd, I'd like to take the time to, to work through the process. But that's just not that, if, if the council wants to, to do that, I suppose that we will do it.
Well, our short-term city manager was far sighted and put his job description in here.
Yeah, I saw that. I appreciate that. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, then I would, uh, like to make a motion that we call a special, uh, council meeting for January eleventh at four P.M. For the process, do I need to include what's the, the agenda item?
That would just be the one agenda item.
One agenda item.
Yeah, you can say, uh, for the purpose of discussing an interim city manager.
That's what I'd like.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second for a special meeting called January eleventh at four P.M. To discuss the, uh, city manager and what, uh, the council would like in the new city manager. All right, we have a motion to second. Please pull the vote. Oh, yeah, sorry, we lost. I'll pull it. Help out there. Councilman Short?
Yes.
Councilman Murray?
Yes.
Councilman Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Minscor?
Yes.
And Mayor Gastineau? Yes. All right. Okay, so we'll be meeting, uh, eleventh, four P.M. Mr. Mayor, can we direct staff then to go forward and start... And advertise.
Possible people.
Yeah, is, we want to do that?
Is it by consensus or...
Yeah, I, it would be by consensus. But is that put in the cart for the horse if we start advertising now?
I don't think it, you know, are we talking about expending money? Or are we just, I, I, I don't know what advertise, advertising means a lot of different things to different people.
I don't think it's a, a lot of money. You know, we can, uh, you know, there's a lot of contacts through the state that I can kind of reach out to and kind of figure out if there's anybody out there that's interested. We can advertise in the local paper. Uh, you know, we can, uh, you know, do whatever the, you know, council wants us to do.
I think the, the reach-out opportunities and with the league and so forth regionally, that, I think that, I think that's a good idea to start collecting some...
Applications.
Possible people to consider.
I'm, I'm curious about contingency plans with, say, we only get the two applications for interim. It's not what we want. I'm wondering how, like, when Mr. Palazzo went on vacation, Eric filled behind him. I wonder how long that process can go on before we're really in a, the situation where we need a public works director and a city manager role.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that something we need to...
Well, yeah.
I mean, obviously, we need to prioritize our, our, our process here. I'm just curious how, how long that can go on with Eric filling in.
That would be a better discussion on eleventh, or... Right now?
Possibly.
Yeah. Right. But, and I, and I...
And I, and I, and I agree with Councilmember Short. I don't want to sound like I'm the guy that's dragging his heels. I just want to, I want to, want to vet this out the best that we can as we make the decision. But I don't want to, I don't want to just somehow impede the, the ongoing work of the city by holding this up.
Sure. It's only the destiny of the city, no big deal.
Well, you can blame me, it's okay.
Okay.
We know who we can blame.
No, the person in the center seat, that's a, or, or... Okay, so are we on a consensus finished with this discussion?
I am.
And we will take it back up on the 11th. And does staff have clear direction? Direction. Okay. All right, we are now done with our agenda items, agenda items, and we're going to the city council items. Is there any legislative matters? Anybody? No legislative matters, city manager report? I see a report on current status of city projects.
Mayor and his council will be very brief on this and, and some process that we were trying to put in place to help and keep the council informed, keep staff accountable. And we have a lot of projects, a lot of programs going on in the city. We tried to put together a chart to show you the snapshot of what was adopted in this, this year's budget, what the strategic priority projects are. It's kind of a first draft to get out to the council. We're continuously refining it. You know, this is something that should probably come back to the council at least once a month and, you know, discuss, maybe reviewed, you know, have a strategic plan session, you know, section on the agenda to go over strategic priorities. We are moving into January, typically January. First meeting in February is when we adopt our strategic plan for the year. So, we can put together our budget. Our mid-year budget is, you know, coming at you, probably first meeting in February. And then we're going to roll right into next year's budget. So, you know, this is, you know, an important document to try and keep us focused on, on, you know, can we accomplish, you know, what we say we're going to accomplish? And so, I just wanted to get it in front of you, take a look at it, provide us some comments. If you have questions on it, let me know. And on the 19th meeting, we'll probably, you know, have a little bit more focus on our strategic plan and our next steps for 2016.
All right. And keep those things churning, just keep going. There's no stopping. Keep planning for the future. Okay. Reports, concerns, referrals, council travel and training reports. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first.
All right, Mr. Short.
You wouldn't let me do anything, so...
Okay. I didn't let you do anything.
It's true.
Well, go ahead now.
That was it.
Oh, no.
Thank you. Thank you for that brief report, Mr. Short. Appreciate it. I'll just go down this way.
I, I attended our visitor bureau meeting. We, the, I guess the notable thing to, to bring forth out of that is that the, we approved the process to consider applying for the status as an official State of California Visitors Center. It's a, it's an RFP process. ARCA has been and they are, they are giving that up. I don't know all the details of that. But it is not out yet for RF, for an RFP. They will let us know when it is. It's got a $1,000 non-refundable application associated with it. Obviously, there would be some concerns involved in the application because of the building with ADA access and so forth. But the, the value of being an official California Visitors Center is, is significant. We would be placed on every state map that's given out. We would be, we'd have a full-page advertisement. We'd be in the official California State Visitor and Tourism Guide. We would receive back from the, the company that we contract with to put all of our tourism cards out in different areas. We would receive back income from them by allowing a rack with everybody else's stuff to be in the official center at the tune of about $4,000 a year. The annual cost of being a California Official Visitor Center is someplace between $5,000 and $7,000. So, it almost becomes a wash with, with your revenue versus the expense. The estimated value from a, from a public relations standpoint, they estimate that the value of those maps and the visitor guide and everything that goes with that, it'd be worth about $185,000 in advertising dollars. Don't know if this is even feasible, if it's possible, but it's certainly worth a look at. It would literally put Crescent City on the map and, and that's significant, especially being that we are the, the furthest north city in Crescent City and being on 101, a major tourism route. I mean, I really would like to see this happen. I don't know that it can, but I, I'm glad that we are at least approaching that. Quickly, other things, we had a chamber seminar luncheon where Recology gave a presentation, talked about all their services. Redwood Coast Transit meeting, our local chamber board meeting where elected our new officers. Attended the Furball and I think, given the weather, we had pretty good attendance for that with, with the number of people there. And just on a personal note, I, I attended the Madrigal Dinner for the first time. I had not had a chance to do that since we've lived here and it was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. Was so impressed with our, with our choir, our Madrigal singers and the leadership presented at our school and certainly something that, that we as a community can be very, very proud of. And with that, I would also like to wish all of our people in Crescent City a very happy holidays, Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year.
Mr. Holly?
Thank you. Once again, and we had another senior center personnel committee meeting, trying to, to really nail down those personnel policies. We're about 80% done, so you'll, you'll stop hearing me talk about that at some point soon. We had a Transportation Commission meeting and, and one of the items that was brought up during the Transportation Commission was, we talked very briefly, but we talked briefly about the guardrail issues some, on, on 199, where we still have a, a car in the river and, and there's no guardrail. So, so Caltrans is going to, I think, give us a report at, at the next commission meeting. So, we are going to be paying attention to that. We had a solid waste management authority meeting. And not only will it be my last meeting as chair of that organization, but it's my last meeting altogether. So, I'm so disappointed when I saw my assignments. I, I did go to the Sutter Coast Hospital Christmas Party there at the Cultural Center. And as I talk about the Cultural Center, Eric, I want to thank you and everybody for getting that, that repair done, because there were hundreds of people there over the last couple of weekends. But we did play some music there for Sutter Coast Hospital and, and they seemed to all be having a good time at that location. And I hate to tell you this, I, I'm glad you, you called on me third because I wrote down hairball. We went to the Furball along with the other... Okay, thank you. Are you done? Ms. Murray?
Tough act to follow. The Furball was a great event and we did have an excellent turnout and it was a lot of fun. And some of us even danced, so that was a good time. We had the airport meeting and we're moving along to start the new terminal, which is very, very exciting. So, we should go out to bid next year and we will be done with the terminal. We, in fact, we were encouraged to start the bidding on that by the FAA. So, we should be done in a couple of years with the new terminal, which we so desperately need. We did have the Local Transportation Commission meeting. It got moved to the 17th because of lack of a quorum. And Congressman Huffman has released the white paper from the Last Chance Stakeholders Group. So, that should be coming out to the public shortly to explain what the stakeholders group has been doing on the options, the alternate routes for Last Chance Grade and how the, the stakeholders group has been working together and what we've been doing there. So, that should be coming out to the public soon. And I too wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season with family and friends and a very happy and peaceful, healthy New Year.
Thank you. Okay.
Speaking of the hairball, have we heard from Looking to the Future about, any kind of report about how we did?
I'll get a report to the council, probably first of the year.
Thank you very much.
I think they had something on their Facebook page, Looking to the Future, so. And they, you know, like $25,000 to $5,000 in that range. Nope, not at all. Okay, so I had a solid waste meeting and yes, with the new, uh, uh, committee assignments. I will miss the Steady Rock that we had there with, with Mr. Holly as chair this year. And it was good and I've been looking forward to bringing Mr. Enscore on and, you know, showing him the ropes and, and, you know, mixing it up a little bit, I'm sure. Uh, we had Redwood Transfer Authority. I think Mr. Short's coming on to that new and so taking Rich Nea's spot, which Mr. Enscore was doing it for that. And that was a good meeting. We have a special meeting coming up. We're going to be talking about, I think, our RFP for our new director coming up in the future. So, and then just today, me and Mr. Palazzo met with Jeff Harris and Jeff Napier from the school district and they just did a little tour of the Cultural Center to look at it as a possible place for after-school and cultural learning for our community. So, just in the very, very beginning preliminary steps there. But we might have some partners to help us rehabilitate the Cultural Center. And it's a good thing that, you know, they got all the stuff done. I was not at the Furball. My apologies go out there, but I, I did buy tickets and put on the radio for people to, to win in my support of the cause. But the outer deck was in, on the foyer floor and siding was on the stage. And they, they wrapped up for the Christmas season, the Cultural Center, and I told them they need to put a big bow on it. So, everybody, everybody knows that we are trying to make it a beautiful present for the rest of the city. And I'll just go with that. Other than that, as everybody has their new committee assignments, and we'll, we'll get this out to the local media and also on our website so everybody can see. Not very many changes, just moved some people around and got Mr. Short into the thick of it and just a few changes here and there. So, everybody seems to be okay with their committee assignments right now? Any concerns, you know where to find me. And other than that, I would also like to wish everybody a great holiday season. And we were going to see you back on the, the 19th for our next regular scheduled meeting, but we'll see you again on the 4th. 11th. Fourth is when I get back to, to work. I'm on vacation right now. So, but if there's no further business here at this meeting, we will be back, our regularly scheduled meeting on the 19th and our special meeting on the 11th. Thank you. And everybody have a great holiday.
Thank you.
And thanks for sticking around. Government is slow.